Duhon Heffer?
Here.
Mrs. Mauer?
Here.
Ms. Shelton?
Here.
Mr. Snellings?
Here.
Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. First of all, we have a presentation from the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance, their annual update, and I will recognize their president, Mr. Curry Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is a PowerPoint presentation, I think, that's loaded. And I hope to move this along pretty quickly, but happy to have a conversation and answer any questions you may have as I go. How operate this, right? We sort of, the first gives you the average of those 43 projects that we worked with. You can see the capital investment, the average number of jobs, the building size they're looking for, and the average acreage that would be required by the project. The second number is the project range. So you see, it's a pretty big scale between a million and 1.2 billion in capital investment. Jobs run 30 to 200 jobs. And I think that's something to keep in mind. A project with 200 or more jobs, regardless of what those jobs are, is very unusual, if you look at basically what you see across the state these days. Amazon is really an anomaly, in terms of what went on with that headquarters. That is, that is a once-in-a-lifetime project for Virginia and frankly, for the country. And I'm going to have some more information on Amazon HQ2 and its potential impact on us. There've been a lot of questions about data centers lately. You see some numbers below about their megawatt usage. Many of them scale up much larger than this, but that gives you a range on first-phase development. They do have heavy water demand, but that varies dramatically by project and what their cooling systems are. But they do want close access to fiber, or at least close access to interstate rights-of-way. I put this in there because I know there's been a lot written about interest in the region from data centers, and you all are aware of that. But they can't go everywhere. You need to consider where they are. One of the challenges some of our counties in the north have had is kind of a leapfrog effect, where they went way beyond the capacity of Dominion Energy to serve them, and then tried to backfill with transmission lines through residential neighborhoods. The sites that we have looked at across the region, the 30-plus or minus that we've been working on, we actually follow the transmission and distribution lines and looked at the capacity along those lines. So be very careful about the leapfrog effect, looking at properties that are not along major transmission routes. That's just advice. We're happy to market whatever you want, but in order to avoid some of the challenges we've had to the north while we can, that's something to keep in the back of your mind. Marketing calendar for the year. This is a error on the printout. It says category. I'm happy to tell you what the New York trip was. That was a data center trip with a group called BizNow. They had a data center conference in New York, and we were invited as guests of Dominion Energy. And actually, had about six meetings with data center developers while we were there. One thing that we've done this year that we have not done in the past with VEDP, we focused very heavily on going with them as it related to, or partnering with them, on site consultants. Site consultants, professional site consultants account for about 30% of all projects nationwide. It's just not an area we've spent a whole lot of time on, because you've really got to, you've got to work it. And given what the marketing calendar looked like this year, we decided to focus heavily on site consultants. So we have a call trip with one other regional group to Ohio and VEDP coming up the middle of September. We will be going down and bringing in the business attraction folks at VEDP to give them an update on where we are. We do that about once every two years. There's a speed networking with a targeted group of site consultants out of the top 100 site consultants, and we are going with eight other regional groups to that in New York in January. ROI, the spaceholder that you see over in April. ROI is our lead generation firm that we use, and we are holding that timeframe around a potential trip to California and a site consultant conference that we're looking at there. And then the Connect, Consultant Connect FAM Tour, VEDP put out an opportunity where they would cost-share. If you bring site consultants into a region, you typically pay them, which is something that we have been reluctant to do in the past. However, VEDP, working with a group called Consultant Connect, was willing to pay half the cost for two regions. And we had to bid in. There were 12 regions that asked for that, and we were one of the two that got selected. So we'll have eight site consultants in here for about a 48-hour period, looking at our region, engaging with our local partners. And then we're going to create an opportunity for them to give us feedback. And you will probably be invited to that, to hear what they have to say. Assist by region, this is basically the lead generation by VEDP, by the state, and I'm going to give you a quick summary of this. We took some similar population areas, and we looked at how many lead referrals they get from VEDP. You guys can look at this later, but the bottom line is, the big reason we don't get as many referrals is more is what's on this map. This is the number of business-ready sites, and you'll see below what that means, is 100 acres or more, or buildings that are over 60,000 square feet and less than 20 years of age, with some other demographics or other, other features to them. That's why we've spent so much time on site development, site characterizations, and site audits over the last few years, is to try to continue to improve our inventory. My guess is, by the end of this calendar year, there will be one Tier IV site in the region, and that's probably going to be in Spotsylvania. Dahlgren Tech Transfer, I know there's, a lot of you all have worked in defense contracting and very interested in what's going on with the bases. We spent about two years with the FRA trying to get in place a partnership and intermediary agreement with Dahlgren. That gives us access to look and meet with the researchers who have patents that have been released for commercialization. We have brought in George Mason, CIT, and Mary Washington to help review those patents. We're also working with an accelerator out of Northern Virginia. Do not ask me what any of those patented technologies include that I've listed below. Nick Miner, who was on our staff, has been the lead on that. He's met with the processors. And Nick, today, started as the Economic Development Director in King George, which will mean we can continue to work on this project together, and I'm looking forward to it. But what this does is open up significant opportunities for the base, for the region, and also for the University of Mary Washington on cyber and sitter projects, which we are, we are also working with the university on there. You have before you a project package to incent this afternoon. The model of that package is what we're trying to replicate here, where the company got a license on a product, took it, developed it, created a market for it, and then decided to locate their production or expand their production into the region. The simple model is, if we could do more like they do around the Redstone Arsenal in Alabama, that's what we'd like to do, where it's a boomerang effect. Send it off, get it developed, but have the production done within the region. A little bit on Amazon impact. This came out of a study at George Mason University. I think the county administrator has seen this before. Been a lot of discussion about residential demand based on Amazon's move. As you will see here, Stafford would be slated over the 20-year period, I believe, of the full build-out at Amazon, of having less than 1% impact from a residential standpoint, based on direct employment to Amazon's HQ2. That's not where our opportunity is. Our opportunity is around suppliers to Amazon, and that's where we're spending most of our time. Tech Talent Pipeline Initiative, one big side and big opportunity for Stafford and the region. Almost all of the incentive package around Amazon is based on workforce development. There are opportunities there for us to participate with George Mason and Northern Virginia Community College, with the University of Mary Washington, and with Germana, to develop better programs down to the primary and secondary level, to put people on a path, a career path, in cybersecurity quicker than what has traditionally been done. The university has done a partnership with Mary Washington Healthcare and Germana that actually gets folks to a bachelor's degree. If you count first grade as when you start, they can come out of Mary Washington with a bachelor's degree cooperating in joint crediting between Mary Washington and Germana. They can get to a bachelor's degree in nursing in 14 years. Can we replicate that in cybersecurity, or computer science, or in a whole bunch of other curriculums? And that's what really we're trying to do here and what this is about. Pipeline to Promise is a separate initiative. There are going to be two or three grants provided by the State Council of Higher Education to a couple of institutions. Mary Washington is competing, along with Germana, for one of these initial grants. It again requires partnerships between the secondary school system, the community college, and the four-year university. Again, speed to degrees, but it looks at high-demand jobs within our region, not based on what's going on particularly with, with Amazon. Ironically, one of the fastest-growing occupations in the region, high-demand jobs, is computer science or anything related to a computer. But nursing and STEM teaching also jump up pretty hard. And if you're going to fill STEM jobs, STEM teaching jobs, you're probably going to have to grow them instead of recruit them. And these are our investors. I also left with your clerk, saved the date for our annual meeting, which is on November 7. I think you'd find that a really unique and interesting opportunity. We have the three lead folks who worked on the Amazon HQ2 project from the state standpoint. Lori, and I always mess up her name because I'm not from Louisiana. Malanchan, she is the VP of Communications and Marketing at VEDP. Christina Nguyen, who was the Business Development Director for Arlington County, she is now the Economic Development Director in Prince William. And Stephanie Landrum, who leads economic development in Arlington, or in Alexandria. They were the team who basically did the work on the Amazon HQ2 from start to finish. And they do a very, very good presentation, and I think you all would find it interesting. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Any questions? Anything at all? Ms. Baumke.
I don't have a question, but, and you and I have talked about this, and I don't know exactly where this has gone, but as you even said in your comments, that Northern Virginia maybe did some great things as it related to data centers, but they definitely had some lessons learned. And I would just like to recommend, on behalf of the board, if the board is willing, we did have that meeting with Senator Warner, and he talked a lot about, you know, if you ever look at data centers, please get in touch with my office and find out what Northern Virginia did well and didn't do well. And so I would just like to ask the board if we could have the permission for Curry and his staff with the county administrator to get with Senator Warner's office, and before we get too far into the trenches and with any of our data centers and start making sure we've got our ducks in a row.
We have any objection to that? Anybody okay with that? Thank you, Ms. Baumke. Anyone else? Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Roberts. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any additions or deletions, Mr. Foley? Did you aware?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, we're going to have presentations by the public. I guess we better approve the agenda. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion carries seven to zero. This time, presentations by the public. I would ask that when you approach the podium, to please state your name and address. If you are a high school student, do not give your address. You will have three minutes to speak. The green light will come on and tells you it's time to start. The yellow light will be one minute left. The red light will be wrap it up. So with that said, I've got one speaker card. Hope I pronounce this right. Rebecca Chung. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good.
Hi, Rebecca Chung. I'm a high school student. I just came to talk to you guys today about the work. Nothing that we're being done right now, but just a comment about what we're doing right now. We are working for these secondary routes. It has been hard on lots of us, because we see that we're doing change, but people still are in these accidents. Since the last time you guys were here, there were at least three accidents that we have knowledge of, of students that are not here with us anymore. Two boys from Mountain View. And it's hard, and we're just asking for you guys to work with us further on what's going on. We know that many of you guys have reached out to us, but we just want that, we know that this is an election year, and that promises are being made, that those promises are kept, kept for the time while people are in office. We've met with people, and they've said yes, 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 but we're just asking that this goes on record, that we are trying to make change. We see the people that typically, that are saying things, and they're nice suit people, and they don't drive to work with us. They don't drive to school or work with us every day and see the fact that some kids on 17 are fearful for their lives when they're driving to school. It's scary. It's scary that I can't go to my friend's house without fear that something could happen to me. And passing that spot where Helen died every time when I go down to my friend's house is hard. Realizing that this isn't forever. Realizing that when I leave and go to college, my sister's still going to have to be here to drive. It's just continuing this. It doesn't stop because her spot is cleared. We have to clear everything that we can see, everything that we know, because you guys drive these, too. You guys all live in your districts, knowing that, having the information that your roads are bad, communicating it. We know we didn't do that before, and we're trying. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only speaker card I have. Is anyone on my right like to address the board? Anyone on my left?
the sixth power is when the lame duck session begins. The day before that, I'll get to vote again in the Rock Hill District for myself. What's very interesting, that two to sixth power is Colossians 2:8 says, "Beware of the philosophies of men and not of things according to Christ." I was at the post office at the gerrymandered Garrisonville District, which is west from the Pence Fence, and the Decatur seafood smells on Labor Day, even though it says Friday, Saturday, Sunday. If anyone has seafood allergies, even doctors have a hard time determining that. I also want to take the time to revisit what an appraisal is. It's an unbiased professional opinion of a home's value in a purchase and sale transaction. Whereas, an assessment determines the market value of a piece. However, all assessment methods have flaws. That's why many homeowners choose to contest their assessed values. That's why, until we have term limits, we use objective operations research techniques, even use the KISS principle, that means keep it simple, stupid, and I'm the stupid one, then we'll be able to relay why people are assessed accordingly. Then you all have the authority to put the tax rate on it. But right now, I recommend to any property owner to go online and look at the year 2006. You will see, then in that year, and ever even year after that, it might not even show up now, because now it's an election year, you know, things disappear off websites. But you'd be surprised that any of your properties was assessed inaccurately. And finally, I want to readdress political campaign signs. Two to the sixth power is 64 days. That's 63 days to Election Day. It says a maximum time of duration of 60 days at any given location up to twice a year. Fix the law. I know you want to do Dillon's Rule and all other kinds of aspects, but I'm tired of seeing signs that say, "Time for change." Well, change is what's in my right pocket. And if you need a data center, IBM.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on my left like to address the board? Anyone else in the chamber at all like to address the board? Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board. Reports by board members. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Shelton?
I'd like to defer my time. Thank you.
Ms. Baumke?
Yes, I, for the first time in six years, I don't have anything, board report, except I'd like to remove consent item number 13.
Mr. Cavalier?
I will follow suit and defer.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, I'll be the skunk in the woodshed. First of all, I met with the Commissioner of Revenue. If you remember, we talked about looking at our tax relief and tax reform methods as a board, and he said he would form a committee and look into it, and so we've been looking into it. I have no doubt he'll come forward with something in a timely fashion. Last week, I went with Dwayne McCosker, and we toured Ferry Farm Elementary School to look at the proposed renovation and see how that was progressing. I had a very good visit. Staying with schools, several weeks ago, Mr. Cavalier raised the problem at Wide Water Elementary School about the air conditioning or lack thereof in the kitchens. I asked that we look into and find out how many other schools there were with that. We found a nice total. And then our last meeting, I told you that Mr. McCosker and I had talked, and Mr. McCosker had been pushing on the school side on that issue. Two Saturdays ago, at their work session, they received information about how to address these schools with, that are having bad air conditioning. And the total to do it in a full-fledged way, not a partial way, would be under $1.5 million. These schools are throughout all the districts in the county. They go from Wide Water Elementary School over to Hartwood Elementary School. They range from North Stafford High School all the way down to Ferry Farm. So this isn't anything for one specific district. The plan that was being talked about was to do one school for the next summer, and then address the other schools at some point in the future. Quite honestly, that, in Mr. McCosker and my attitude, this is sort of sad, that the other schools would sort of be on a, "We'll get to you" attitude. And the school system's going to be opening up in 90-degree weather. It seems as though we would do something to help those employees that are in the kitchens. And in one of the schools up in the northern end of the county, I spoke to one of the teachers whose room is next to the kitchen, and her room was unbearable during that hot spell, because the heat goes through the concrete. So hopefully, the school system will look at the idea of using part of their carryover funds from this year to address this issue in a more timely manner. And so it just, I thank Mr. Cavalier for braising it up in the first place. I thank Mr. McCosker and our side for helping promote this and looking into this, and hopefully, we can actually do what's right as we move forward. Lastly, I would like to pull item number five from the agenda. Thank you.
Mr. Dudenheffer?
I will be very brief. It was just a great summer. Work doesn't stop just because we don't have board meetings. So a lot of things going on, and we have a lot of initiatives and things that are coming forward. So you'll be hearing a full-fledged fire hose from me talking about the bond referendum that's going to be on the ballot in November. So we've reviewed a communications plan to set that and to disseminate the information on it. It will be in accordance with the state law and won't advocate one way or the other, but I can advocate, and I believe it's the way forward. So that's really all I have. Thank you.
Mrs. Mauer?
Yes, the, just want to mention that this is the centennial year of the women's right to vote. And so I attended the League of Women's Voters, where they honored several of our female elected officials here across the Fredericksburg region, and that was a lovely event. And they were surprised to hear that Stafford County leads the way in having more female elected officials than males. And this will only be the second time I will mention that, but it was nice to see Rebecca Reed there. She was the first female chairwoman of the Stafford County Board of Supervisors. And so I do want to make note of that. And finally, it's, it's a sad time in Stafford's history. Irma Clifton has passed away, and I want to thank Mr. Cohen for sharing that information. She was beautiful. She may not have always agreed with us here at the Board of Supervisors, but she was beautiful in her delivery, and I will never forget. I'm Irma Clifton from beautiful downtown Falmouth, and so may she rest in peace.
Mr. Snellings?
Just want to remind Mrs. Mauer that I brag on 12 out of 19 elected officials are females in Stafford County. So when people come to me and said, "It's a good old boy network," uh-uh. It's a good old girl network. You guys are in control. I just want to take this opportunity to thank everybody that sent me well wishes, telephone calls during my stay in the hospital. It was a long seven days, but I survived. And hopefully, if I do what the doctor tells me, it won't happen again. So thank you very much. Report of the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report at this time.
County Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, we have just one item. Wanted to give you a brief update on strategic plan, item number four, quality educational opportunities, and give you an update on the school site selection search process that we're doing jointly with the school system. Just very briefly, because we're going to have a joint meeting with the school board on October 15, with Mike Smith is going to come up and give that brief update.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. I'm Mike Smith, Deputy County Administrator. The school site selection team is comprised both of, school staff as well as county staff, has been meeting regularly. The team is reviewing the existing and anticipated school populations and where they will be as in relation to the attendance zones. We will use this data in conjunction with today's high school zones and identify where the new high school should be. So we'll get it, and all of this will come back in the joint session to go over it with you and the school board. And so we're looking at where the current attendance zones are, where the need is, and how, if we put a high school in any of the areas, it will draw, and we can see where it'll go. And then we'll recommend an area for the new high school. We're also evaluating the two existing sites, both the Cliff Farm site and the Westlake Proffer site, to see if they are suitable to be used, and if they fit in the, with the criteria that we've established with the zones and the school site selection team. We will also identify the criteria, as I had mentioned, and the general location, and we'll come to the joint board, school board meeting in October, and give you our process for moving forward with a consultant to identify those pieces of property. We'll come back in December with those identified pieces of property in closed session with the joint school board and board, and discuss which ones we'd like to move forward with in negotiations. Are there any questions?
Any questions from Mr. Smith? Ms. Mauer?
Just one comment. We have come a long way. So thank you. That was very well received.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do I have a motion for the consent and general S. Items five and 13? So moved. Have a motion by Mr. Dudenheffer, a second by Ms. Mauer. Cast your vote. It's not allowing us to vote.
Yeah, it's not.
There we go. I pushed that button four times. Motion carries seven to nothing. Item number five, Mr. Cohen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was one I really didn't think was going to be on the consent agenda. When we talked about the changes to the CIP policy and the program, and we asked at the, I think it was at the Fab meeting, we asked for sort of a walkthrough on how it would work and to see it through the different scenarios. And I thought we'd come back to that committee and walk it through and see it. So maybe I misunderstood that. But in seeing how it's operated, it raised some questions in my mind, and I don't want to belabor the point during the afternoon if other people think we should do it back at the Fab. But if, and if people have no problems, then I'm the only outlier. But I just thought we'd get it and see it and discuss it a little bit more. So that's why I brought it, took it off.
Yes, Michelle.
Mr. Cohen, I thought the same thing. And I thought one of our recommendations were to, we gave some recommendations for changes in the score, and then we were going to to, we gave some recommendations for changes in the score, and then we were going to compare that to projects to see how it fit in. And I, that was my expectation too. And so I'd like to hear what other board members, but I'd like to, well, I'll make a motion later to defer it, but let's see what other people feel.
Ms. Baumke. Did you? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Foley. I thought you said.
Mr. Chairman, we may have misunderstood that. We had thought that the majority of the committee was fine with moving forward. We amended the scoring criteria and took some other feedback that we incorporated in. And then after that discussion where there seemed to be agreement, I think staff had mentioned, we did do some analysis, did some comparisons on specific projects, and I, we thought our, the direction was move forward, but give us that information so we can take a look at it as we go forward. We were also kind of sensitive to the idea that the CIP is underway now, and we're actually scoring projects according to the new scoring that you all gave us feedback on that day. So we can, we can proceed however you want to and try to bring that back at the next meeting. If there's concerns that you might go ahead and change it further, however, it seemed that the majority was comfortable with the changes that were made, so that's why we didn't, didn't pull it back as a committee item.
Any other questions? Would it disrupt your schedule if we deferred it just to the next meeting, because Fab is at the next meeting and go back to Fab and come to board that day?
No, I think we can work with that.
Does everybody agreeable to that?
And, and, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I will send some questions to you that I had by looking at it. As a visual person, I, I had questions about how it worked, and once I saw this, the matrix and how it was being applied, then it perked a lot of questions, so I'll send those along. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll put that on the next agenda, and it'll go to Fab at the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, it'd be okay to also put that on the regular agenda?
Yes.
In case there's agreement so that we can proceed?
Agree, agree.
Thank you.
Item thirteen, Ms. Baumke.
Yes, I just wanted to let the community know that we are going to be moving forward if the board votes affirmatively for Edwards Drive, and I just want to let you know that this is a street that's a cut through between Deacon Road and two eighteen White Oak Road. It's like a, I don't know, how do I describe it, but people's speed, excessive speed. When I first got on the board, we put in a sign, and, and Mrs. Gail Leat, one of the people that lives on Edwards Drive, collected all the signatures for the excessive speeding sign to go in. So I thank Gail for all of her efforts there. Then we realized that people just are not slowing down. We've had the deputies out there for the last number of years, and since then, we decided we would have a study done to see if we meet the requirements for traffic calming. And indeed, they did meet those requirements, and so you needed to have so many signatures in order to move forward with the traffic calming, and we're looking at speed tables out there. So the community has unanimously, there were maybe four or five no votes, but everybody in the impacted area wants these speed tables, and hopefully it will slow people down. I will indicate, let you know that last night, there was actually a skateboarder out on Edwards Drive, and somebody hit him. It was a hit and run. He, he did fall down. He was able to go home, and hopefully his parents maybe took him to the hospital to see if he had any concussions, but it wasn't, ended up luckily not being anything major. But if anybody happened to have any cameras at their homes and saw or heard about that event, any information that you have would be great if you could send that into the sheriff's office. But the community is very excited about getting these speed tables in, so hopefully they can go out and get their mail when cars are going by and don't have to worry about losing their life. And I'd also like a big shout out to Deborah Potter, who also collected a lot of the signatures with Gail Leat and Jeanne Rector, who did a lot of the Facebook messaging during this time period. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move for approval of R nineteen dash two forty-four.
I have a motion for approval. I have a second. Mr. Cohen, second it. Any, cast your votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, this is a quick question, and I apologize for it more than likely being out of order, but it was regarding one of the consent items. We petition VDOT to put them in the state system. How long does that take typically?
I'd ask someone from Public Works.
Before the snow or after the snow? Perfect. Thank you.
Everybody else okay? Unfinished business, number nineteen, planning in zone. I establish a complete count committed to support the upcoming twenty twenty census. Ms. Kraus.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Donna Kraus, Director of Community Engagement and Human Services. I'm not Jeff, but he is, he's my wingman right here. Computer, please. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the census. This came to you all several months ago. I'm doing some follow-up, providing some further, it's in the, it's, it's in there. You all should have it in your background report, I believe, so I'll just. So since the census is fast approaching, it's going to be in April, April first this day. In January, the federal government is going to begin to provide advertising to the community and their media campaign, with households being able to complete the census, begin to complete the census in March. So it is essential that we locally begin to prepare, and staff has been working to do that. I want to give you a brief update on the regional committee. There has been a regional complete count committee established with the GWRC leading that charge. Their function is going to be to focus on regional strategies, to provide that information to localities, to help with access for the census, also developing marketing materials. The, the composition of the regional committee is mainly entities that serve the region, so like the library, the hospital, agencies that are really focused on the region as a whole, and then the local committees will be focused on those specific organizations that will reach our citizens. So since we've met, they have had a regional training. There are about five members of our staff that attended that training with the GWRC, received a lot of information, got some statistics, developed some strategies preliminarily, and then they're going to be holding several other meetings throughout the year to help us as we move through getting ready for the census. They have established an MOA through the Planning District to develop those marketing materials I mentioned. They are requesting some funds from each locality to contribute to that so that they can then develop those marketing materials for each of the localities. So for the local CCC, we would like to focus on specific areas that are going to be usually under-targeted and under-counted. There is some census data available that kind of directs us to specific areas in the county that, where we need to focus on, but in addition to that, we're going to be focusing on populations that typically don't get counted. So for example, those under five, those over the age of sixty-five, low income, people that have language barriers, the African-American population and Hispanic and Latino populations are those that really we need to really focus on, and our committee will be developing strategies so that we can make sure that we reach those populations. So our recommendation today is that we establish our own local CCC. We have, we are recommending a slew of organizations that we feel would benefit that committee and target those specific areas so we can focus on those. And now it's up? Oh, it's on my screen. You all can't see that. So we are asking for some funding, and our funding will be to address our local efforts. So when we go out into the community for events, or we have events that are happening in the community that we want to participate in so that we can have those conversations with our residents, materials that we might want to develop on our own. And so we're asking for our own budget of about eleven thousand dollars to cover the costs of those initiatives. So we're asking for you all to approve establishing our own local complete count committee so that we can begin our work to focus on our strategies. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Kraus? Ms. Baumke.
So if I remember from the GWRC meeting, United Way is coordinating on behalf of the whole region.
Yes, ma'am.
And then we are a finger into United Way. Is that how that's working?
So the United Way, Janelle, the president of the United Way is chairing the regional complete count committee. We will have representation on that committee. Our chairman of our local committee will sit on the regional committee so that there's constant flow of communication back and forth. So that's how that connection will work.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
What will the funding be used for?
Which funding? The eleven thousand or the?
The twelve thousand and?
So twenty-two hundred of that is slated to go to the GWRC for the marketing materials that they're going to develop for the region. They are going to be contracting through some, through a contract process, probably in January to get those completed. Our eleven thousand dollars is to cover those events that we're going to have and the initiatives that we're going to do just for Stafford County. So it could be purchasing market, additional marketing materials. It could be purchasing, so for example, T-shirts or giveaways that we might want to have at a booth if we're out at an event. So I worked with Jeff, because I have not, I didn't participate in the last census, so when we got together to discuss strategy, that was the figure that we came up with for those initiatives.
Any other questions?
Just, you're, the committees will not actually be counting anyone, right? You're just advertising. You're just kind of a focal point for getting out information. Isn't it the Fed's responsibility to go door-to-door and mail everything and get the count right?
It is, but there, there will be leading up time to that day where we will want to be out in the community, making sure people understand the census. There's a lot of information, misinformation as well, of understanding what the census actually does and how you should complete it and why. So we're going to be using those funds leading up to that point, and then actually on April first, the regional committee has, I don't remember the theme of the day, but there will be a period where we will go out into the community and, and further that work on behalf, you know, as part of the, the whole census. Jeff, if you want to clarify even more.
Sure. In twenty-ten, when we worked on the census, we had what they called Blitz Day, which was designated day, I don't remember exactly which day it was, but it was after April first. It was with a lot of county staff and the CCC volunteers targeting specific neighborhoods to go knock on doors. Also, we had people stationed at shopping centers with booths, like Donna was describing, with signs telling people to remember to fill out your forms. This, this census is going to be a little bit different, and a lot of it can be done electronically versus someone having to fill in a paper information. Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Follow-up, Jeff. This concerns the census itself. In the two thousand and ten census, I wasn't involved in the actual, the committee, but I was involved in the redistricting part, or using the census data to redistrict the county, the county and the magisterial districts. The, I was told that the Census Bureau sends out a copy of what they believe the blocks, which are the, the building blocks for what, where they count population, that they would, we would see that enough time to actually go in and correct mistakes. And I'll remind you about a mistake that was in where there were blocks inside of blocks. And in one specific case, one of the drivers for the, almost the entire census was there was a block with three thousand people in it that had to be moved all at one time, instead of most blocks, which were a hundred people or so. Have we seen that census, and have we reviewed it and made comments?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Dudenheffer, our GIS department's been actively working with the Census Bureau on giving them updated information. A county like Stafford is, is very dynamic. We're growing very rapidly, so we have to continually provide them with updates, information on where new houses have popped up, what the new addresses are in the county, and what houses have received occupancy. So it's an ongoing process with us, working with them. They do have an established census tracts and census blocks, which do have to get modified to some degree, and we provide them with the data input for the Census Bureau to work, work those details out. Now, you mentioned about reapportionment. There's also a dynamic with that, too. When we go to reevaluate the location of the election districts and the precincts, we have to make sure that we don't have a precinct that's overpopulated or will become overpopulated in a short period of time. So that's some of the dynamics we have to think about as we're moving forward, both the census and the reapportionment after the census.
Mr. Chairman, that, none of that is a part of this effort, though, but there will be a committee will come to you all to ask to appoint that will be involved in that whole process, and you can define the scope. This is really just getting the word out.
My, my point, Jeff, is that, that, the fact that we either neglected to or didn't catch the fact that there was this problem with the blocks, this has nothing to do with account, it has to do with their, what they're building from, but these blocks were inside of blocks, and you have to move a full block. So have we, do we have any way of determining that they fixed the problem that last year? I mean, it directly resulted in us splitting Acquahia Harbor in half because of the excessive numbers of people that had to be moved in total all at one time. So the, and to me, I keep harping on this, but it's, it's critical for where we're going to go when we start redistricting Stafford County. It also affects the state and how they do theirs. I mean, this is a complicated process that, to me, I, I saw major issues with the last time, but do you know if the GIS guys have actually seen what the blocks are going to look like so we can make sure there are none of these failures?
Mr. Dudenheffer, I, I do know the GIS has been working closely with them, and maybe at a later point, we can provide the board with the information. But the reapportionments aspect of it with the election districts and precincts are a bit different in that you often will end up splitting some of your census blocks with district lines based upon how you have to balance the people out. So reapportionment is a little bit different than the census in its calculation of how many people you have in a certain geography.
My memory serves me. I mean, I sat for hours in front of the computer program that they have that allows you to move, move the blocks from one to another, so you, and it automatically gives you recounts and it looks at demographics and whatever. I don't recall any that we split at that time. I, you know, I could be mistaken, but I don't recall that we split a single block. If we did, we would have split this one that's all back there behind Lowe's, that part of the county, and we, we didn't do that. I think it takes work now in order to not have this problem a year from now, when we're actually sitting down and trying to reapportion, redistrict the county. I, it, to me, it just makes logical sense. Another big issue we had, and I don't know, this may not be the right time, but the state takes our magisterial districts to do their redistricting, and the way that the sequence on both the state and the local level is, when they start, they take the existing districts the way they're apportioned, and they use that as their basis to try and avoid split precincts. But in fact, when you're in a fast-growth county like Stafford is, that process actually encourages and creates split, split precincts, and it, the perception to the public is that we, you know, we intentionally did that to sequester or to, to limit some of the voting blocks and whatever, and nothing could be further from the truth. But I, I just would like to know if we could, what, what the GIS department has seen, and have we reviewed the proposed blocks to make sure we're not going to have the same difficulty?
And Mr. Dudenheffer, as the county administrator said, we've had some preliminary work in that regard, and we were planning on coming back to the board as we got closer to the time of the actual census to talk about reapportionment and how we're going about doing that.
But don't you agree that, I mean, by the time we do the redistricting or the, you know, we go to the census, it's too late?
Yes, sir, and, and that's why we are tracking all of our growth and looking at the boundaries of the election districts and the precincts and, and looking towards the future as to where where they may end up being. And we'll be working with this committee on an advanced estimate of where it could end up being. And then likely we could make recommendations to the state based on what we're seeing.
Mr. Chairman, the charge of that committee will come before you in the next month or so. And we can be sure that we carry those comments into the charge and get some clarity about how early you'd like to look at certain things, to be sure that we take an early look and even check in points with the board as a whole, however you'd like to proceed with that. Understand the importance of the issue and we'll make sure that it's, it's getting a focus with this committee that's going to be before you for consideration.
The timing of the issue is what I'm talking about and actually making an effort. I mean, we, we're going to get to the point where they're going to say, oh yeah, we see the problem, but guess what? It's too late. I mean, that's, that's our normal routine with VDOT, right? Is, oh, we changed this. Oh, it's too late to change it back or to fool with it. So I'm sorry, I'm going to step out of this. I hope I don't have anything to do with the redistricting the county this year. So, thanks.
So back to Mr. Dudenheffer's original point. And you, you made a comment related to the Complete Count Committee. So these people are going to be going door to door. And when they go door to door, are they going to have a list of people who haven't responded and a means for which to have these forms filled out to improve count? Or are we just going into neighborhoods?
Well, Ms. Mauer, I was referring to what happened 10 years ago.
Right.
I'm not sure what this new Complete Count Committee is going to want to do and what's going to be discussed on the regional level for, for localities to do. But the idea back then was to knock on doors to make people aware. That was the extent of the involvement. There wasn't passing out forms to individuals or anything. We may have given them a little brochure or a one sheet flyer to explain the census, but it was informational only.
I just want to ensure that it's, it's going to be productive time spent, especially if we're investing those staff time and marketing dollars. And yes, it's important to market. Yes, every person counts when it comes to federal dollars. I understand that, but, but when there was mention of going door to door, it would be very important for that to be productive time.
I think when we talked at the regional meeting with George Millsap, who's our US Census Bureau representative, the focus is really going to be on the new methodology that they have because now you can do, you can even fill out the census on your phone. And so we're really going to be trying, our initial number one strategy is really going to be trying to market to those populations so that they understand it and will do that before we go, you know, door to door. I think that's, that's really the focus.
But will we be provided some sort of information or updates on where we are missing the mark so we can target those efforts instead of just a broad swath? Is that, I don't know if George?
Absolutely is the answer to that question.
Okay.
The, the data has already identified.
Who's responded? Who hasn't responded? Where do we go next?
That's the whole, that is the whole point.
That information is provided. So they go through a first round.
Okay.
And then they say, okay, who hasn't responded? Then there's a whole second round and they send people door to door to those people.
I just wanted to, I was getting that in the?
And Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Mauer, the Census Bureau does have what they call a Rome map, which is identifying those areas through a predictive model where we're probably likely to see a low response rate. And we already have that information for Stafford County, which we'll share with the committee. That may help frame some of the discussion as to where we target the efforts. Again, as we go through the process, the census starts on April 1st. It's not completed until the end of June. So that we will likely get progress reports, so we will find out areas that have higher or lower rates.
Ms. Bonkey.
Yeah, just when VACO had somebody from the state there speaking, they're going to be giving people so many different opportunities of ways to be counted. So a lot of people that have Wi-Fi and, and you can even go to the library and, and send your form in on your phone, but that's a great question. So hopefully they won't have to spend a lot of time except on those, the low percentages, the zero to four, the over sixty-five, et cetera. So, but I, it sounds to me like from the presentation I heard down in Richmond, they, they've taken all of that into account. Have they forgotten anything? We hope not.
Okay, I think we've beat this dog to death. Do I have a motion for R-19-220? To fund the program? There's a resolution here, proposed. Is that correct, Mr. County Administrator? I'm sorry? Number nineteen?
Yep. So move.
I have a motion by Ms. Bonkey. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Shelton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, cast your votes. Motion passes seven to nothing. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Thank you, Ms. Kraus. What? Item number 20, Planning and Zoning. Authorize the county administrator to initiate a proffer application on tax map parcel, and I won't go through all those numbers, located along Centerport Parkway in the Hartwood District. Mr. Zeraf.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We went through this at the last meeting. We, the board at that time chose to delay because Mr. Snellings was not here. So I don't know if I need to run through the whole summary again, but you know?
I'll, I'll watch the meeting, so you don't need to.
Okay. So it basically is a consideration of authorizing the county administrator to initiate the application to act on behalf of the property owners for a proffer amendment on up to eight parcels along Centerport Parkway in the Hartwood District. I have a map that's available if you need it for your discussion. The resolution is R-19-249 and I won't go into all the details.
Any questions, Ms. Mauer?
So there's one hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred, those fees have been paid?
Excuse me?
As part of the proffers, I'm reading the original proffer statements.
Yeah.
There was the developer's obligation to advance and contribute to such design and engineering fees shall not exceed the sum of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred. Have we collected those fees?
Let's see which proffer that is.
We paid for a road.
Which proffer number?
This one, actually it's on all of them, quite frankly, but I'm looking at Centerport Parcel, Centerport Parcel B, zero nine two dash eleven. This is the original proffer. We're getting ready to revise all of these proffers. We're doing it at the county's application. My question is, is that have we collected the money from the developers already?
We're not certain if that's been done.
Okay.
Just trying to find that parcel, that proffer.
We might have to.
It's on all of them, quite frankly.
Yeah, it's on all of them. Staff probably needs some time to go back and do some research on that.
Yeah.
How soon do we need to vote on this? And we're not voting to eliminate the proffers today. We're just, we're just voting to send this, to make the application, correct?
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So this would be starting the process to hold public hearings to eliminate the proffers.
Right.
And also as background, those proffers were oriented towards constructing of Centerport Interchange, which has been completed. I don't recall back in the 1990s if the, that, those proffers have been paid. Maybe take some time to, for us to analyze the background information, if we can find it from that era, whether they were paid by the developer.
So there's not only that amount whether or not, because those proffers move forward to the new developers and they're now enjoying the benefits of those particular, I mean, whether or not we pay it in arrears or we pay it now, they're still enjoying the benefits of a substantial investment by county taxpayers. But on the flip side of that, there's a whole lot of stormwater management requirements in these. And given the fact that my district has flooded significantly, stormwater management is a, is a key topic area for me. So when we talk about eliminating proffers, where are we on the stormwater management aspects of these proffers?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Mauer, the current regulations are more stringent than the proffers.
Stringent than these, okay.
Required.
All right. And then there was one more item in these, and it was the setbacks. There was, we've received all of the contributions as far as land is concerned that we need?
Yes, the original developer gave the county sixty acres for the airport, which became the local government's match towards built, getting the federal dollars to build the airport.
Okay.
They also donated right away for Centerport Parkway for the interchange as well as the Parkway itself.
And we're also looking at, I mean, if we're eliminating the proffers as a whole, there is the preliminary site plans that we're also looking at eliminating. And so do they get to do whatever they need to do by right? Or is there still going to be an approval process moving forward as outlined in these proffers?
Supervisor Mauer, the current county code does not provide for a preliminary site plan process anymore. It used to at the times that the proffers were made.
Okay.
Preliminary site plans were still administratively approved, but it created a two-step process where a preliminary site plan had to be reviewed by county staff and approved. And then ultimately a final site plan was reviewed and approved, which created duplicative effort and extended the approval timeline. That's why the board in the early 2000s eliminated that requirement for a preliminary site plan. If I recall, the proffer may reference sending it to the Planning Commission for their review.
If we eliminated the preliminary site plan, so there is still a Planning Commission approval process since we've gotten rid of the preliminary site plan, according to these proffers.
Yes, and the, the actual process would be for them to provide comment but not approval under today's code.
And what about the water and sewer pro-rata share? Are we getting, we've made substantial investments in the Centerport Parkway area that has been borne by our current water and sewer holders. Will they still be required to pay for these pro-rata shares for the substantial improvements that have been made to Centerport Parkway?
Yes, ma'am. Pro-rata share for public water and sewer is a code requirement.
Okay.
In today, whereas in 1992, that program was just getting started.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? I remind everyone, we're not here to vote on eliminating the proffers, just to send it to public hearing. As this is in the Hartwood District, I motion for approval of R-19-249.
Second.
Second by Ms. Shelton. Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your vote. Motion carries seven to nothing. Oh, six to one, I apologize. It all popped up green and I'm getting used to this new voting machine. Six to one with Ms. Mauer voting no. Planning and zoning, healthy growth discussion provides clarification on the process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We discussed this at work session at your last meeting on August 20th. And some of the key components for the board's consideration were a potential timeline for work sessions on healthy growth. The timeline identified a work session on September 17th, November 6th, and December 10th with the possibility of making a referral to the Planning Commission to start the public hearing process in January. Some of the other key questions that staff was asked, seeking guidance for from the board, beyond is the timeline what the board's expecting us to do? Also was, we, we would like to see direction with regard to the work sessions themselves, whether or not they are supposed to be open to the public and, and/or would the board entertain establishing a special committee of landowners and developers to provide input on the transfer of development rights aspect of the healthy growth program? Also, if a special committee is not desirable, should the staff proceed on a different track and specifically discuss and interview certain landowners and developers to get their feedback on TDR, to give them education, number one, and two, to get their feedback on what they see is the market for the TDRs and the likelihood for them to be used and if there are any incentives they think are important to be in the program. And then finally, there was discussion and need to get verification that the board and Plan Commission would hold a separate public hearing process.
Any questions to Mr. Harvey, Ms. Mauer?
Mr. Chairman, considering there are four specific questions that they are asking us, can we deal with those one at a time?
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. Harvey, before we move forward? Okay, so you need a direction on each one of these initiatives, is that correct?
That would be fantastic, please.
Okay, first initiative, does, does the proposed timeline meet board expectations?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, we, we reviewed with you on the schedule for the next six months, a series of work sessions with the assumption that the board would be doing the review rather than a committee. And so that is, those two things are sort of tied together. If a committee was to be formed, I think the whole schedule would need to change. We put that together based upon what we thought was a conclusion from previous work sessions. So I think those kind of go together.
Okay. So I guess the main question is, are we going to let the board do the work sessions and not a special committee? Or we're going to appoint a special committee? That's, that's the question. If we appoint a special committee, the timelines are going to change. Ms. Mauer?
Mr. Chairman, I would propose that we go with the timeline as presented, which includes the board making the decision. We, we've discussed this at length and that would be my recommendation.
I second that.
You putting that in form of a motion?
Yes. Well, consider that a formal motion.
I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. Dudenheffer. Any discussion on this? Mr. Cohen?
Yes, and I was not able to attend the work session because of a family health emergency, so I couldn't articulate then. But I, in my opinion, we should have as much input from the actual landowners. I'm not talking about developers, I'm talking about the, the landowners into this process. So I, I would vote against this motion because I think that it serves the public best. I don't think, and Mr. Harvey, I'm sure will give me a look, but I don't think there's been an instance where a community has gone to a downzoning and then turned around and went back. So this is a, a life-changing decision that impacts many people's futures and I just feel that we should have more input than less.
Anybody else over here? Mr. Cavalier, I think was next.
Sure. I mean, we've had a lot of discussion about this and, you know, I don't know if we ever came to full consensus certainly, but I know there was a lot of discussion and some support with the formation of the community committee. And so, you know, I didn't know we were going to make those decisions in a single board meeting here. I thought we were going to do that as part of the work sessions that we had instead of debating this at the table today. But I, I'm in favor of forming a committee for, for input into such a impactful decision on many property owners in this county.
Anyone else? Ms. Bonkey?
So I agreed to the, the prior arrangement where we did include, you know, and had community meetings with the public. They were productive, but my concern is that in some of those cases, we had people that were trying to run those meetings and steer them in a certain direction and, and that kind of troubled me some. And so I feel like we are the voting members for our individual communities. And I would definitely like input from the landowners and I feel that we should definitely educate them, like Jeff just described, on the TDRs and, and look at some different proposals and how would they be impacted and, and what would they like to see? But I don't really want them to be part of a formal committee. And I feel that we should be the ones making that decision on behalf of the entire community.
And then, Mr. Dudenheffer?
I think my position has been, been very clear on this, but I'll repeat it. I believe that forming a committee favors the landowners, the developers and the real estate agents who work in this and have a profit motive as opposed to what's best for Stafford County. And the people who are just the average people out there that pay the price for the overdevelopment, the excesses in the schools, the lack of transportation, aren't represented. They're the ones who drive into the city and get home at 6:30 and go to the soccer game with their, their family. They don't have a profit motive. I think it's our, our duty to weight this thing heavily. And we've already had a, a complete meeting with, with all these other people and I agree with Ms. Bonkey. It, in my opinion, it was not indicative or representative of the, the community as a whole. It only represented a very small subset of all the, the now homeowners and residents of Stafford County. So I favor Ms. Mauer's motion.
Ms. Shelton?
I've thought about this a lot. And we represent everyone. We represent the businesses, we represent the residents of Stafford County. And although I really do not like pushing this decision out longer. I really do not like pushing this decision out longer, I think it's so important that we include all the businesses, all the people that are impacted by our decisions and all the things that we do. And I think that not including this particular group, and just saying just the residents, or just this person, or just that person, or this whatever, I think those are really bad ideas. And I cannot support anything that's not going to include the individuals that we're actually going to impact. And plus, I mean, you think about it, the common sense part of this is, is that if I want to, if I'm going to do something that's going to impact you, the very best thing I can do is bring you into that fold and have those discussions with you, so I can understand your point of view and you can understand my point of view. And what that does is that leads to the consensus, or at least less objection, when we actually come out with what the decision should make. So I'm not going to vote for that, Ms. Maurer.
Ms. Maurer?
Okay. So just for clarification, Mr. Foley, how many community meetings did we have prior to this?
I don't know if Mr. Harvey remembers the number, but we had a fairly extensive process. And by the way, I would just point out that what you're considering is whether you'll get community input through a committee, or whether you'll get it through work sessions that will then have public comment, that will then have a final open session for comments, and we're also proposing that we actually meet with landowners and developers also, so that they'll provide feedback through staff that then gets to you at these work sessions, which the public will then comment on. But, so I think it's really the method of public input, not whether or not we'll have it.
So in addition to all of the community events that we had over the last year, where we went out into the public, we also have, if I'm reading this timeline correctly, three additional board work sessions with public comments, and then we have the planning commission public hearing, the board public hearing, and so there are several opportunities for everyone to be involved at different times, correct?
Yes, Ms. Maurer. I recall the work session, some board members chimed in that they liked the way the planning commission conducts its work sessions, that they reserve time at the end of the meeting for citizen comments. So that was what staff had envisioned for these work sessions, that there'd be a timed slot, 15, 20 minutes at the end, to get input from the public, from what they observed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Dudenheffer?
Just one last. The inference from some of the comments that are made are that we're rushing to judgment on this, that we're, here in September, we're talking about concluding in December. How long have we been working on this, Jeff?
Mr. Dudenheffer, it's been at least a year and a half.
It was brought up at the off-site January of 2019, so we've been working on it already for over a year and a half, so that any implication that we're rushing into this, I think, is not fair, and it's not appropriate for this, so.
That was 2018, just to be clear.
Any other comments? I've got a motion, and I've got a second. Any other comments? My comments are, I think this needs to be handled by the board. There's going to be plenty of opportunity here for public input. There's going to be work sessions where there'll be allowed public input, there're going to be public hearings where there'll be public input, and as Mr. Dudenheffer just pointed out, we've been working on this for almost two years, and I get questioned on it every day. So it needs to be brought to fruition. So with that said, I'll call for the vote. Please cast your vote. Motion passes five to two.
Mr. Chairman, I know we had mentioned that there were actually four questions. I think, based on this conversation, we understood that you wanted to follow the normal process with the planning commission and with the board. That was one of the questions. That was our assumption, unless there's some difference there. And then also, we did assume that under this process, we would reach out at the staff level to rural property owners and to developers to get feedback that would feed into this process. It would just be done with staff as we bring things to you all.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cohen?
From what I read of this, I just want to make sure it's codified in this, because it says to reach out to the property owners and developers, and educate them on the TDR program, and to receive their input and advice. So, maybe it's just my occupation, but is this, it will be a two-way communication. It's not an, "We're educating you, and then we just want your input on what we're telling you," as opposed to, "You talk to a landowner, and they say, 'Look, this is the concerns I have, and this, that, and the other.'" I just want to make sure it's a two-way communication.
That is definitely the intention, and the education part of this is just to make sure that we have a foundation for the conversation and feedback.
Okay.
And so, I might, Mr. Chairman, ask that you all consider perhaps a formal vote on the last two bullets, just to be sure that there's no, and that's up to you, Mr. Chairman, but in case there's any difficulty there in terms of what we're intending.
You're talking about to contact property owners?
Yeah, contact the property owners.
Okay. Should staff contact rural property owners and developers who build projects in the USA to educate them on the TDR program, and to receive their input and advice? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll put that into a motion, and to further elucidate on that, and engage in a two-way communication in order to receive input and educate on the TDR.
Would you come back to the board?
Which will come back to the board for consideration.
Second.
Motion and a second. I can assure you, the landowners in Hartwood will have some communication.
Can make a friendly amendment?
I don't think we have to worry about that. Yes, Mr. Cohen?
It says the TDR program, but right now, the TDR program is one thing. What we're talking about is the TDR program and the downzoning. So the communication should be of both those elements, not just the one.
I would agree with that, and even expand it a little more, and solicit recommendations for the TDR program.
Thank you.
Do you agree?
Second.
Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. Ms. Bumpke.
So I just want to remind everybody that this is all great conversation, because if we create a program that isn't going to be used, then we're all at fault. So it's paramount that we receive comment from the landowners and the developers, and get their feedback, and come up with something that's creative, that works for everybody.
Just one last comment, and if I could just add a, but that it doesn't, that this doesn't impact the timeline that we've agreed to.
Agree.
And I just want to probably ask a question that I've been asking for the year and a half I've been on this board. You don't have to answer it the second, because I don't put people on the spot, but I have been asking a simple question of how many parcels of land are we talking about, and how many acres of land are we talking about? When you take it outside the USA, and you take out people who have PDR programs and conservation easements, and you take about the steep slopes and all that, I've been trying to figure out, are we really talking about a grand number or a little number? And that, I think, is a big element to this.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Cohen, staff will have that information for you at your next work session. We're actively working on that with the GIS department, specifically figuring out how many development rights can be transferred from the rural sending area, and how many could be received in the targeted growth areas. So we're going to give you raw numbers for the big picture, but the next work session after that, in November, we're going to come in with alternatives for you all to consider.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Last bullet point.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a final motion, that the board and planning commission will conduct independent public hearings, and not rush this through by doing joint public hearings.
Second.
Motion and a second. Are there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Let it be noted in the record that about 4:05, I lost total control of this meeting, so I want that in the record. Let's move on. Next item, item number 22, Planning and Zoning, amend and reordain the Stafford County zoning ordinance by amending the zoning district map to reclassify from R1 suburban residential zoning to R3 urban residential zoning, high-density zoning, George Washington District.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Brian Gooch with Planning and Zoning. As Mr. Chairman stated, this is a request known as Cherryview Landing. It's a reclassification from R1 to R3 for the development of 71 townhouse units. This was covered at your last meeting at public hearings, so I'll try to be brief. This property consists of approximately 10 acres. The applicant is Beazler Homes, represented tonight by Charlie Payne and the George Washington District. This meeting on August 20th, 2019, the board deferred action on the application to this date, and requested that the applicant consider restrictions on rental uses and additional amenities at the proposed pocket park. The applicant has submitted additional materials in response to these comments. So in your, I guess we don't have the presentation, but in your materials tonight, you'll see a revised GDP. The applicant is now proposing to add a pickleball court and a community garden and bike rack in addition to the previously proposed amenities. Looks like we're getting that pulled up now. So as a reminder, the pocket park was proposed at the south end of the development. Originally, it included the tot lot and the open play area. The applicant is now proposing a pickleball court and a community garden in addition to bike racks. Otherwise, the development is unchanged. Skip through this. The applicant has submitted a revised proffer statement. The proffers, all the proffers are summarized here. The changes are underlined. They've added a proffer which restricts the rental of any unit within the first 12 months of ownership, and that would be a restriction added to the covenants. As for the pocket park, they moved up the timing slightly. Used to be required by the 43rd occupancy permit, now it would be required by the 37th. And they've also proffered the pickleball courts, community garden, and bike rack. And staff also notes that they've removed a proffer which requires the four access points to the development. However, they still have a proffer that requires general conformance with the GDP.
Ms. Maurer has a question.
On including the 12-month restriction on rentals, how is that going to be written? So is it a 12-month restriction on the initial purchase, or if, let's say you have a house that's in foreclosure, and somebody picks it up as an investment property, would it be 12 months on the resale or reacquisition of the property?
My understanding is it would be 12 months in the first 12 months for any owner. So if you resold, change of ownership, you would have that 12-month period again, but I'll defer to the applicant.
Yeah, because, Mr. Cohen, you could really end up with, I have deep concerns about that, because then you could end up with a blighted property if you can't have investment. I understand first go-around, but second go-around, you could end up with a vacant neighborhood. I think we need to reconsider that.
Okay.
Quick question, if I might. Is that, the county attorney, is that legal? Somebody buys a house and they can't rent it?
Mr. Chairman, I believe this would be a covenant, so therefore will be enforced by the HOA. I would say that county staff would have a hard time enforcing it through code enforcement, however, for the covenants, it's not something the county would enforce.
Okay.
Okay.
Just go through positives and negatives again. We find that this is consistent with the land use recommendations on the comp plan, including density and phasing recommendations for the Warranton Road targeted growth area. We note the proffered recreational amenities. We find that mitigation of impacts to schools and public safety are considered reasonable. The proposed density is consistent with the adjacent Rappahannock Landing townhome development, and the proposed building designs are consistent with the Neighborhood Design Standards Plan. For negatives, we note that certain members of the planning commission expressed concerns regarding traffic impacts on local neighborhood roads. Staff is supportive of this application, and we note on June 12th, 2019, the planning commission voted 5-2 to recommend approval. And I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Dudenheffer?
I have a question for when the applicant's lawyer shows up. But one concern I have is HOA covenants, that's where we're talking about this going. HOA covenants can be changed. So just because the developer puts it in, he only has control of the covenants until he reaches, what, 50% or better or under? And then, at that point, a certain, whatever's in the covenants, the change can be made to him by the existing resident. So our concern is that we don't want to overpopulate with rentals, but if the people living there want to overpopulate with rentals regardless of what we think, they can go in and change it. Is that correct?
Yes, they could be changed after the fact, and we may not know about it unless we receive a complaint about rentals, and we look into it further.
But I mean, it wouldn't affect us. I mean, once the property's built and sold out, and they have HOA covenants, it's no longer a Stafford County problem, right? We have no more control over anything that happens there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cohen?
And, Mr. Gooch, and this is softball, but so, aren't there other communities in Stafford that are of the same type, that are condos slash townhouses, which have these type of covenants? And if the people feel comfortable with it, then they would keep it in place? And then if it really became a problem, they could make that decision, but there are other instances where it could be done successfully.
That's my impression. I can't give you any exact examples, but I'm sure they're out there.
There's several in my district, but that's okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Bring it back to board, George Warson District, Mr. Cohen, what's your pleasure?
Did we want to hear from the applicant's attorney?
Do you have questions?
I don't, but Mr. Dudenheffer did.
If he would like to say something, please come up.
Usually, when I was on planning, I kept forgetting that, so that's why I'm tentative.
Well, we usually do that in public hearings. This is not a public hearing. Come on up, Ms. Payne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and other members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm not sure if this is the moment I keep my mouth shut, or I just say, "Do you have any questions?" I'm happy to answer them, but I appreciate the dialogue. We went back to the proffers based on the feedback we got from the board. We tried to balance a lot of things here, you know, one, when the issue of rentals comes up, typically when homes are new. So you get investors who come in, they buy a block of them, let's say. So when you create that prohibition from the beginning, you actually eliminate that, actually the best opportunity for them to become rentals during their first many, many years of their life. What we have seen, and Mr. Cohen is right, we have seen where property owners get in there, they're there for a very long time, they don't like having a lot of tenants, although they do like the ability to rent if they have to. Like we stated in the last meeting, we have a lot of military personnel in this area, and they can't control when they're transferred, so we don't want too many handcuffs on them. So we wanted to balance that, we also wanted to balance the Fair Housing Act law as well. So what we have, after talking to lenders, we think is a good compromise, so we've included that. And we also went to the amenities, because several board members wanted to see a little more color to the amenities. We provided that, and so hopefully, that fits what your expectations are. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Payne? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Bring it back to the board, Mr. Cohen.
Yes, I move for approval of O 19-30.
I have a motion for approval, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Shelton. Any further discussion? Ms. Maurer?
Yeah. So I'm struggling with this one, and the reason I'm struggling is it's the proffer amount, it's the lack of services, we've got some serious transportation issues in that area. However, on the flip side of it, we, this is in a targeted growth area, and so this is where we do want growth. And so, this is difficult for me, and I guess we'll know where I stand when I vote, but I just wanted to ensure that this one is a struggle.
Mr. Cohen?
Just very quickly, I appreciate the applicant reaching out. I've had communications from people in the neighborhood who are in favor of it. It fits in with Rappahannock Landing, it's in the TGA, and I appreciate that they've, when we raised issues two weeks ago, they've addressed those, and that was very much appreciated by many people. So that's why I'm voting in favor. If we are going to put growth in our TGA, we're going to have to vote yes on some things.
Mr. Dudenheffer?
To kind of piggyback this off of a previous discussion we had, is I'm a firm believer that the supervisor from the district has a strong hand and understands what his district wants. So my first inclination is always to support that, and I'll say I'm going to support this. But what I will say is, is that we have a target But what I will say is, is that we have a targeted growth area, we want growth there, I agree with that, but we also have non-targeted growth areas where we're having excessive amounts of growth. So by approving growth in our targeted growth areas and not dealing with the growth in these other areas, we have now got both, and that is a major, major problem, I think, in the county, so.
Any other comments, Ms. Bomke?
So when this project first came about, I was concerned about the roads there. You've got short road right there next to the interstate, but just so people know, the road, short drive, the traffic light there is going to be moved over to Colonial Forge Drive, and that's a much easier road to access. And so as that whole intersection is improved, which they're working on right now, I think it'll be a much better flow out of there. And it is in the targeted growth area. You know, we, I'm not, if this project was over 100 units, I probably wouldn't be voting for it, but the fact that it's 71 units, there are a lot of people that need to live in townhomes. These are nice townhomes back there, and I think we need it. So because of that, I'm going to be supporting this project.
Any other comments? Seeing none, have a motion and a second. Cast your vote. Tie the vote. I don't know what happened there.
Six to one.
Okay, we've, motion passes six to one. New business, economic development considering an incentive agreement for a new business, George Washington District.
Mr. Chairman, this is the same item that I recused myself from when we discussed it in closed session, so I'm going to recuse myself again just out of, given my husband's position.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to present to you for the first time a publicly, an incentive agreement proposed for a company. This will come back to you in two weeks. I have with me the president of the company, Mr. Amit Kapoor, to answer some questions. I just want to highlight right now that this, you heard from Curry Roberts earlier from the Frederick Regional Alliance, this is an example of a project that came from the FRA, a regional project, a new business that wants to do business here in Stafford, and one that involves tech transfer from Dahlgren and other matters. So First Line Technology was established in 2003. They manufacture prepared emergency response equipment and products for use in the military and first responders. This is a growing market. They are ISO certified. They recently won the, one of the 5,000 fastest-growing companies. What they want to do is new, they want to move most of their production and production of new product here in Stafford. They want to create 19 new jobs here in Stafford, and they will continue to do research and development. I will defer to the chairman if he would like to hear from the president about the company.
If he'd like to speak, that's fine.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all, and thank you for having me. So John did a great job explaining, we've been around for 16 years now, and we focus in on manufacturing products for the warfighter and for first responders, and we've delivered an ambulance bus actually down to Stafford County a couple of years ago as well. So we have four different product lines that we manufacture, and we've run out of space. We're based out of Fairfax County, and we've been on a search for a new location for about a year and a half, and we want an area that's fast-growing. Our customers are the DEA, you know, the military, and we want to get back and come back to kind of where their home is down here in Stafford. So that's some of our focus of our business. Our website speaks justice about us, and we, one of our newest products that we're focusing in on is a product that's used for the opioid response. So it's a chemical that's used to neutralize the opioid epidemics occurring with first responders. It's similar to Narcan, you apply it to the surface and it'll neutralize it. DEA is a big customer and many others within the international community. So just a brief overview, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
I can answer any questions, too.
I'll continue with the presentation and then certainly take any questions. Again, Stafford was located by the company, as actually they were looking in the Frederick Region, they found a property of interest in Stafford. We talked about the tech transfer. This is a manufacturing company. As you know, I'm trying to work to encourage more manufacturing-type companies, and they are working also with local colleges and universities. The incentive is thus, they would like to intend to take title to the property at 487 Lendell Lane. That is a manufactured, yeah, zoned manufacturer. There would be some rezoning because it's an interesting parcel because it is owned M1 and M2, and they will shift that after they take possession to make it all M2. They will invest in new business personal property of approximately $1.35 million over five years, that's business personal property. They will, of course, buy the property, improve the property, which is currently owned and pays tax, but I would say is only underutilized, so it would be more utilized space. Again, the incentive is based on creating 19 new jobs in Stafford over five years, and there's a schedule based on that in your package. These will be well-paid with a benefit package. The structure of the incentive is thus, the economic development authority will pay, provide reimbursement to the company up to $25,000 for building permits and CUP for the site. And then this is a performance-based agreement, so it has clawbacks. It is based on the percentage of new tax revenue generated by the company in Stafford. So over the course of five years, it equals out to about half of the new tax revenue generated in the county that will be granted back to the company through the DEA. So in other words, A, the company has to create the jobs, and B, the incentive is based only on the new investment they put in. So if they put in less, they will get 50% less than what was projected. So that's my presentation. If you'd like to have any questions, we'll be glad to answer.
Any questions, Ms. Bomke?
So I know the DEA has been working over a period of time on criteria for granting grants to potential businesses, either businesses that are already established or new ones coming in. Will this company compete for those DEA dollars like anybody else, or is this a different situation?
Now, ma'am, the DEA has established basically three categories of their investment incentive program. This falls under the third, which is called a major investment program, so it's not based on a limited amount of grant money and grant applications as per the ones you refer to.
Okay, great, thank you. And then for the public's benefit, could you explain what the clawback is, please?
The clawback is a, if the company does not produce the jobs that they said they would, I don't have that all in front of me, and there's some legal, but generally, in the first year, there's an opportunity for the company to address that if they don't create the jobs they've proposed to create in the first year. If by the second year, they don't create the jobs that they were supposed to create in the first year and the second year, the incentive agreement goes away.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted the public to hear. Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Holden? Ms. Shelton?
I had a question about, because I thought when I'm looking at the repayment obligations, I thought it said that if you did not meet the, what was required in paragraph two, which are those individuals to be hired, then that's a breach of the agreement, and you have to repay all the DEA grant proceeds, not just the incentives. Is that true? Sorry, am I making you feel uncomfortable?
No, it's, I don't have that language right in front of me, but the, in paragraph two.
Yeah, if it's in there, that's what it says, and I'm looking at it, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we certainly will clarify any questions when it comes back to the board for the vote in two weeks. But the intent is that this, that the incentive, whether it be from the DEA or the county, would be repaid if the company does not meet its job creation obligations.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question. This has to do with the positions that are here. You might have to ask the applicant that, but the four positions, the first year and then the 19 over the course of five years, where do those individuals live now? Where are they working from? Are they new people coming to Stafford, or are they currently living in Stafford?
They are new to Stafford, but I'll let Mr. Moore respond to that.
Sure. So we are bringing the jobs, we're going to be shifting those positions from people who are already in Fairfax, and we did a survey of where our employees and a lot of them live down in this area here, and they're commuting up to the DC area, and we're looking to hire a lot more people down here. We're growing as a company, so we're looking for, you know, the best applicant pool, and that's what we're finding from this region here, and shifting some positions that have left the Dahlgren facility and they live in the Fredericksburg area, so we want to pick up those positions as well, because the Kembiot facility shifted away.
And I just want to say that we would welcome you guys to move in Stafford.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Ms. Bomke.
Yeah, one question for you, and I don't know if you're in a position to disclose this or not. I'm curious what kind of work you're doing with Dahlgren.
So it's very interesting. We've licensed technologies, so our business is, the core is to license technologies from universities or government labs. So Dahlgren being a research facility in Kembiot Defense, we work heavily in that arena, and we licensed exclusively patents that they own down there. And those patents have been licensed, we've commercialized it. So we took taxpayer, government-funded technology that was researched and developed, and then we have now commercialized it, and we're allowing warfighters to carry it with them and also get it to first responders especially.
Okay, so you're not necessarily working with, you know, because the Kembiot unit moved up to Indian Head.
Yep, yes.
So it was.
Yeah, so we have a cooperative research and development agreement, a CREDA, that is with Dahlgren, and some of the folks are still there, and as they shift over to Indian Head, we are working now with both.
I gotcha. Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
And we are looking at future technologies, too, so.
Mr. Cohen.
Just very quickly, so unfortunately with the rise of the opioid crisis, it's sort of been a miss, it's been a blessing for your company because, and for the people you're saving by coming with this technology.
Sure. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? We'll see you at the next board meeting.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you being here. Last item on the afternoon agenda on the 24th, discuss George Washington Regional Commission Good Jobs Meetings, and I had requested this. You can do the Reader's Digest version if you'd like.
Reader's Digest.
Just to give the board an idea of what this program is.
Sure, and I'm going to just say a couple of words and then turn it over to Linda. This is ultimately to help create a regional economic development strategy. Regional economic development strategies are important for any jurisdiction because that opens up funding from federal sources such as the Economic Development Administration, EPA, and others. I can say that from experience, and the fact that we do not have a regional study, we have the local studies, but don't have a regional study, limits us in being able to apply for those grants. And I'll let Linda tell you more about the process.
Thank you, John. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. It's nice to be the last thing between you and dinner, so I will try to be brief, as you suggested, Mr. Chair. The name of the program is called Good Jobs Here. It is something that we have had in process at GWRC, and I should say, I'm Linda Millsaps, the executive director of GWRC, if we haven't met. And it essentially has three parts that will be coming together to make hopefully a really strong core of regional, community-based economic development planning for all the region. And so we are using Go Virginia funding, $50,000 that we got from Go Virginia, no match, so that was good. And the three different pieces include, the first one is redoing, updating the commuter skills study that was previously done with FRA in the chamber. We are doing that now in partnership with FRA and UMW. We've already seen the initial report, and we'll be bringing that to you in one of these meetings. I'll continue to describe some kind of interesting findings in there, I will tell you. The second item is to take all of, we have a separate consultant that's going to help us take all of the existing economic development plans, so all the things that John and the DEA and you all have talked about already for this area, but also look at what's going on in the four other jurisdictions and all of Go Virginia and other economic development plans that are there, and try to come up with a good list of commonalities, things that kind of hold the region together, that we could include in the regional economic development plan, as John was suggesting. And then the third part is the part that I find most exciting, and I'm primarily here to talk to you about, which is a series of three meetings we will actually be doing here in Stafford County at the UMW campus of, here in Stafford. And so these are to hear from a variety of speakers in terms of the outcomes of the things I've just mentioned. In addition to that, we will have our first speaker will be Dr. Jim Johnson from the Kenan Flagler School of Business at Chapel Hill. He is their Director of Strategy and Entrepreneurship and is also a great gemographer by training, and he's going to talk to us about regional or national trends, international trends, and what do they mean for our region and for business in our region. We also have some nice little vignettes of what people in the community think is a good job here. That'll be the first meeting, and in each of these meetings, we will have group work where people will be trying to think collectively to come up with what our plans should be going forward. So that is the first meeting, and that will be on September 19th. The second one will be focusing on, don't reinvent the regions that work, and so we'll be having guest speakers from other regions that are doing really well as a regional economic development hub. And then finally, we will have Making the Sausage, Putting It All Together, and during that, we'll be looking at a lot of these different data, different data options, and what does our community look like? Where is it that we want to go? And our hope would be out of this, that we would develop, and we've committed to Go Virginia, we will do this, come forward with a cohesive, community-based, broad-based, data and information-driven regional economic development strategic plan that provides appropriate deference to all the work that all of your individual jurisdictions are currently doing, but trying to get everyone kind of pushing the same side of the boulder, if you will. And then FRA and myself have committed to going forward, we will be putting together a dashboard and working with everyone who comes to these three sessions to see what is it that you all as an organization, whether it's Stafford County or your business or whatever group you might represent if you choose to come, and I hope you do, what is it that you're going to try to contribute to drive this forward? Not asking for donations, but for example, using United Way as an example, how is it that United Way can somehow help us drive economic development forward? How can John continue to drive economic development forward, as he and his staff do for you very well? So the three dates are September 19th, October 17th, and November 21st. You will recognize those as the Third Thursdays. They are from 8:00 to 11:30, and again at UMW Stafford. I really hope that you all would be able to attend. We're asking folks, if at all possible, try to come to all three, because we want to try to build a common understanding of what our data and our community looks like and how we can move it forward. And with that, Mr. Chairman, if there are any questions?
Any questions? I assume it's 8:30 AM?
It is 8:30 AM, yes. I heard a little about that from some of the folks that'll have to come from the South, about how much they appreciate coming to Stafford at 8:00 AM on 95, but they will be there, as will I.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dudenhyer, question?
No.
Okay. Thank you, John. That concludes our afternoon session. I would ask Mr. Dudenhyer for a reader's in a closed session.
We have a long, a long closed session. Whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to D.R. Horton and Metz versus Stafford County and probable litigation regarding the recovery of costs, where such consultation or briefings in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating and litigation posture of the board, and two discussions and considerations of the acquisition of real property for the Route 1 and Courthouse Road intersection improvement project, which is a public purpose and of the disposition of public land, where discussion in the open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the board. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3 and A7, such discussions may occur in closed session. Now therefore be it resolved by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors that on this, the third day of September 2019, that it be, and hereby does authorize discussion of the above matter in closed meeting.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mauer. Cast your vote. Counting the vote. Motion passes seven to nothing. We're in recess until 7:00 PM. Okay, Ms. Dudenheffer.
Resolution to certify that actions of the Stafford County Board of Supervisors in a closed meeting on September the 3rd, 2019, whereas the board has on this, the third day of September 2019, adjourned into a closed meeting in accordance with formal vote of the board and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas the Virginia Freedom of Information Act provides for certification of such closed meetings was conducted in conformity with the law, now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County Board of Supervisors does hereby certify on this, the third day of September 2019, that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were hereby discussed and considered by the board.
Yep. I have a motion and a second. Cast your vote. Motion passes seven to zero. We are adjourned until 7:00 PM. Order. I would ask Ms. Mauer to lead us in prayer, and please remain standing as we do the pledge after the prayer.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful day and the opportunity to gather together, discuss the issues of those we represent. Please guide our hearts and minds as we try to do the best for the citizens of Stafford. Watch over the families of those in the Bahamas that must rebuild after this devastating hurricane, and please bring peace to those families, to the families of those lost in the fire off of California. And as always, Lord, watch over the men and women in our public safety, that they serve our citizens every day. In all these, we pray. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening is presentations by the public. You can speak on any subject that you would like, but if you're here to speak on one of the public hearings, we ask that you not speak at this time, but speak when the public hearing comes up. When you get to the podium, please state your name and address. Unless you're a high school student, do not give your address. You will have three minutes. The green light will come on. Yellow light tells you you've got about a minute left. The red light means it's time to stop. I do have one speaker card. Michael Parkin. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yes, you are. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael Parkin. I reside at 15 Palace Lane. I'd like to comment on the issue of a sidewalk that could connect North Stafford High School to the surrounding neighborhoods. As a background, I've had at least one child at North Stafford High School since 2007, and my youngest won't graduate from there until 2032, so I guess you could see I've got some skin in the game. As some of you may know, a few weeks ago, I saw a pedestrian lying on the shoulder of Garrisonville Road, minutes after he'd been struck by an automobile. I thought of this board's response, should I ask why that man was forced to walk on the shoulder of a highway? And you'd cite dollar costs, most likely. Supervisor Dudenheffer kindly reached out to me a few weeks ago and used those terms, among others, when he was kind enough to talk on the subject. But that cost is meaningless unless we compare it to the cost of not putting in a sidewalk. I attempted to do that by gathering some data from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration and the Stafford County Public School webpages. So I fat fingered some numbers for comparison, and I say fat fingered because not every piece of data was normed in the same way, and quite a bit of error, but I think it'll be useful for comparison. I estimate about 1,200 students get to North Stafford High School by private conveyance each day. Based on the cost of operating an automobile and the cost of crashes, I total that we've probably spent $450,000 per year on private transportation to and from North Stafford High School. I can provide more information later on on how I arrived at these numbers. Based on the cost of operating a vehicle and the incidents of crashes per driver on the data sources I found, we're spending over $1.7 million per year on private transportation to and from north. Now, a recent project on mine road has a price tag of about $120,000 for a length of sidewalk that's approximately equal to the distance from North Stafford High School to Parkway Boulevard, .3 miles. Using the lesser of my cost estimates for the damage, for the cost of operating vehicles, we would have reached a break even on that sidewalk to north in about seven years, if only 300 students used that sidewalk to get to and from school. But we've gone 38 without the sidewalk. I realize the county's in the process of approving plans for Patriots Crossing, which will include sidewalks along most of the length in question. But given the less than impressive progress of three shopping centers in our county, you can see why I greet this news with some skepticism. I had a closing, kind of a joke I wanted to say about getting things done before my son graduates from high school, but in light of the fact that a resident was injured, and for those of us who are over 50, you don't get tagged by a car and get up again and be quite the same. Your years of invincibility are beyond us. That person's life is not going to be the same. He can't unlive that moment. Neither can the driver, who's probably living with remorse right now. So I'd like you to consider these numbers and the additional costs of not putting in a sidewalk before you decide not to put in a sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's the only speaker card I have. I have two others, but they involve a public hearing. Is anyone on my right that would like to address the board on any issue other than a public hearing tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm Elaine Counter of 622 Lancaster Street in Falmouth. First, I'd like to thank the last speaker. Great job on that one. Recently, I attended a consultant-led community meeting during which citizens were asked to share ideas on what Stafford should offer I-95 travelers who get off at the new Courthouse interchange, which is now under construction. I had plenty of ideas to share, but since then, on driving by that part of our county and seeing the abundance of plush green forest that thankfully still remains there, a new thought came to mind. Save those trees. Whatever the county does regarding development in the vicinity of the new interchange, save those trees. Right now, when visitors and commuters get off I-95 to enter Stafford at Quantico, Garrisonville, Courthouse, or Falmouth, they see the usual suburban atmosphere they have come to expect when they get off the interstate at other suburban areas. Usually, it is cookie cutter development, where trees were stripped from the land and sporadically young trees are planted to meet minimum landscape requirements. Similar shopping centers with chain establishments await customers. What community beckons my return when I get off the highway to visit a new place? It will be a beautiful community that preserves the native plants and offers unique shops and cafes and perhaps a welcoming visitor center. After being stuck in traffic on a cement parking lot, the highway, the presence of tree cover is cool and pleasing. Over the years, we've made progress preserving and promoting Stafford's history, and thanks to the advocacy of many citizens, we now have a gorgeous state park at Wide Water. However, we have a long way to go to transform our main corridors to present a positive first impression. With determination, we can do it. Why not showcase Stafford's natural beauty at the new Courthouse interchange and save the trees? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else on my left wish to address the board on any issue? Anyone else in the chambers? Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. Our first item tonight is public hearing, number 25, Planning and Zoning. Amending and reordaining the Stafford County zoning ordinance, amending the zoning district map to reclassify from A1 agricultural zoning to R2 urban residential. Hartwood District. Mr. Zaraf.
Yes. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Mike Zaraf, the Planning and Zoning Department. This is a, if I can have the computer, please. This is a reclassification for a project known as Holly Corner Manor. This is a reclassification from A1 agricultural to R2 urban residential, medium density, to develop up to 120 single-family homes. The site covers 48.6 acres. The applicant's Holly Corner Associates LLC, Stan Burton is the property owner. The site is on the south side of Holly Corner Road, approximately 850 feet west of Country Manor Drive. It's in the Hartwood Election District. Just as a recap, there was a board supervisors' public hearing conducted back December of last year. It was deferred at the time. Since then, the applicant has slightly modified the application. It did require this second round of public hearing, so it's, we're going to go through the public hearing again, the presentation again. So the site is on the south side of Holly Corner, as I mentioned, Holly Corner Road. This is a zoning map of the site and the surrounding properties. Property is owned A1 agricultural, as noted. There are no proffers currently, and it has not been the subject of any zoning changes in the past. There is R1 zoning to the east of the site. This is in the Stafford Lakes Village subdivision. And then there was A1 agricultural zone property to the north, south, and west of the property, of the site, where there are large lot residential homes and to the north and west, and undeveloped property located to the south. Currently, under the A1 zoning density requirements, that would permit up to 16 single-family dwelling units on the property. This aerial photo shows that the majority of the site consists of open fields, with the northeast corner of the site with having forested land cover. Property primarily sits on a hilltop and ridge that has a north-south orientation. The topography slopes gently to the east and west from that ridgeline. Centrally located on the site is a brick rambler-style single-family dwelling, constructed approximately in the 1970s. In the vicinity, there are several farm structures and utility sheds. This is the Google Street View from the existing driveway entrance onto Holly Corner Road, looking into the site. This is the general development plan. It's depicting the layout of the 120 single-family homes. There are two access points proposed. The first is a primary entrance off of Holly Corner Road. That's in this location. And then a second access point would be an interparcial connection on the southern end of the site into Stafford Lakes Village, approximately at the intersection of Country Manor Drive and Wild Rose Drive in this location. The proposed R2 zoning would permit up to 3.5 dwelling units per acre. The 120 lots is equivalent to 2.55 dwelling units per acre. There's some common open space proposed in locations of where there would be potential stormwater management, and also along Holly Corner Road, providing some buffer, buffer area, providing some additional separation from, between the dwellings and the roadway. There's also a tot lot proposed as a community amenity in a central location on the site. The GDP does identify three development phases. The first phase of development would be on the southwest corner of the site, and where the initial, and in the initial phase, the access, the primary access along Holly Corner Road would be constructed. And then the second phase proceeds to the north and east. The second phase is when the interparcial connection would occur into Stafford Lakes Village, and then the third phase in the upper corner of the site. The comp plan, future land use map, classifies the property as suburban. The proposed development is generally consistent with many of the recommended development standards for the suburban designation, as described in the comp plan. Site is consistent with infill development policies. It meets development density recommendations, as it does not exceed three units per acre. The site layout and building design complements and is in scale with the existing neighborhood to the east. And the sidewalk would connect to the existing adjacent sidewalks within Stafford Lakes Village. And also, the site, where there are some limited sensitive resources, the site does preserve those sensitive resources on, in this layout. So the staff has, we have evaluated how the request would impact these listed public facilities, which residents rely on. The comprehensive plan includes policies that recommend new development proposals should be phased to coincide with infrastructure and not develop until the project, projected infrastructure and services have been implemented or scheduled to be phased concurrently with demand. In the next few slides, I'll review the impact evaluation. So first, looking at schools. The total 120 proposed units would generate approximately 115 students, with the greatest number of students in the elementary school. For the purposes of proffer mitigation, the impacts are evaluated based on the net new units, which would be 104 units excluding the 16 by right units under the A1 zoning. The 104 units would generate approximately 98 school-aged children in total, according to the estimated student generation factors for new development. The attendant zones for the site include Hartwood Elementary School, Gale Middle School, and Mountain View High School. So this table identifies the available capacities at the receiving schools, shows that when comparing enrollment to design capacity, the capacity currently exists to accommodate the students anticipated from the development. At the time of the initial public hearing, the same analysis identified a deficit at Hartwood Elementary School. This was due to the fact that it was measured based on program capacity. This served as a justification for the applicant proffering mitigation with cash contributions. Subsequently, the methodology was modified based on the design capacity for schools, for all schools. And this changed the evaluation to result in adequate capacity currently existing at the elementary school, with additional students from the project not exceeding that capacity. So accepting cash proffers under the scenario and under the prior proffer legislation would have been considered unreasonable. So as you're aware, on July 1, earlier this year, the new proffer legislation took effect, and it now offers some flexibility to allow an applicant to deem a proffer reasonable and appropriate, to mitigate impacts of the proposed development regardless of the capacity analysis findings. This would be conclusively evidenced by submitting signed proffers. So if the applicant signs proffers, that's their proof that they feel it's reasonable, the proffers that they're offering. The applicant amended their application to allow it to be evaluated under the new proffer legislation. Modified proffer analysis recognizes the capacity exists at Hartwood Elementary School currently, but does add that the need for mitigation exists when accounting for all the other new developments that are planned in the area. The amended proffer statement retains the previously offered school contribution of fourteen thousand, two hundred and four dollars per unit. So as mentioned, that this application amendment required this new public hearing to occur. So staff has determined that there is adequate park capacity in the location, is based on the 2017 park utilization plan. This identifies service levels, including where park facilities are lacking, and assigns priority areas where additional parks are most needed. For public safety, the site is within first response area of the Berea Fire and Rescue Station. It was determined that the current service level deficits do exist at this station, and any additional homes would further add to current service level deficits. Looking at transportation, a transportation impact analysis was prepared, and it assumed that the project would generate up to 1,336 vehicle trips per day. The study evaluated the level of service at the new proposed site entrance on Holly Corner Road, and also at the intersection of Holly Corner Road with Warranton Road. The study determined that at the new site entrance intersection with Holly Corner Road, a level of service A would be maintained at project buildout. But at the, the results of the traffic study did indicate that at the site development would have a negative impact on the Holly Corner Road and Warranton Road intersection at... at buildout, without any mitigation. Specifically, this would be at the eastbound approach on Holly Corner Road towards Warranton Road. A level of service of F was found, was determined, and it was expected to continue that way into the future without this project. The severity of the level of service F can be, can be measured by queue distance, queuing distance, or stacking distance. With the project, it would worsen without any mitigation. So, the applicant is proposing to construct a second eastbound approach lane on Holly Corner Road. With the, with this, level of service remains at F, but the queuing distance is reduced to levels anticipated without the project. So, the comp plan policies do state that if a project cannot achieve a level of service C, the improvement should be designed to not further degrade the level of service. The applicant does achieve this by installing improvements that would lessen the delay times at the intersection. This image illustrates the improvement that the applicant has proffered at the Holly Corner Road and Warranton Road intersection. The improvements would include acquiring right-of-way along Holly Corner Road, and constructing the additional lane to provide a dedicated left and right turn lane on Holly Corner Road as somebody's approaching Warranton Road. And this would be required prior to the approval of the first occupancy permit on the site.
So, Mr. Zaraf, thank you. Okay, on that transportation impact analysis, once the, the left-hand dedicated turn lane and right turn lane were in, what was going to be the level of service at that point in time, from F, and what was it going to be brought up to?
It was still going to be F.
Okay, I wanted to make sure I heard you correctly. Okay. It was, and it's not going to be brought up to C?
No.
Correct. All right. Thank you very much.
So, during the planning commission deliberation, they did request accident data along Holly Corner Road. This map is out of VDOT crash data, a crash data report for Holly Corner Road. It, it just covers a three-year period from 2015 to, through 2017. In their, in this report, they identified 13 reported crashes along Holly Corner Road. This included five injuries and zero fatalities of the, of these accidents. The types of accidents include one angle collision, one head-on collision, and 11 fixed object collisions, which basically is, could be considered off-road crash, somebody driving off the road, or hitting, hitting a tree, or mailbox, or something else.
Mike, I think Mr. Doobin Heffer has a question.
It's pretty disturbing that we add all this, all this improvement to this road, and we still have a level of service F. What would be required in order to upgrade the level of service to a C?
I think that would have to be further evaluated. It may, I'd have to defer to the applicant on that. I'm not certain if they're aware, but it may involve more significant changes to the intersection with Warranton Road, and that, I'm not positive, certain, but it could, could require like a traffic signal or something, which, you know, VDOT, I don't know if that would be warranted in that location or not.
Okay.
I have a quick question before we go on. Those 13 accidents, is that the entire length of Holly Corner Road, or is that just down to the entrance of this proposed subdivision?
That's the entire length. So, according to this map, it just identifies three accidents between this site and Route 17.
Over a two-year period?
Three-year period.
Three-year period. Okay. Thank you.
So, the commission also requested verification of the width of Holly Corner Road. This request was in response to fire and rescue comments. They decided 20 feet as a minimum travel away width requirement, which is, which, you know, is maintained via Stafford Lakes Village. The applicant did survey the width of Holly Corner Road. The exhibit identifies the width at several points along the road, and the widths of the road do vary from 18 and a half feet to 20 feet along, at the different locations along the way.
Okay. I just drove this road today. Can you just state again what you said? The, the width of the road varies, because I lost your last thought.
It varies from 18 and a half feet to 20 feet at different points.
18 and a half to 20, because I came back and said something to my colleagues. I said, "One side of the road is at least three to six inches shorter in width than the other side." That confirms it. Thank you.
Okay. General Government category includes facilities such as the county's government center and courthouse complex. Staff determined that a deficit exists with the general government services based on current capacity issues with the courthouse. So, the courthouse has run out of room to accommodate regular operations. So, to address this, the county's capital improvements program does include construction of a new courthouse facility. It's now scheduled to be completed in fiscal year 2023, so that approximately, approximately would be in line with the buildout of this project. With libraries, they're identified as having an adequate level of service through buildout of this project. The comprehensive plan projects future needs, and does not identify the need for a new library until the year 2023. So, in summary, the level service, level services would be adequate through project buildout for schools, parks, and rec, and libraries, and general government. As noted, the applicant has deemed cash proffers for schools to be reasonable, as permitted under the new proffer legislation. The project would generate immediate level service deficits upon public safety and transportation. The impacts to public safety would be mitigated with cash proffers. The, combined with the school cash proffers, there would be approximately $15,352 per unit, would be paid upon occupancy permit of each, of each unit. And the transportation impacts identified on Holly Corner Road would be mitigated by the road improvements that I previously discussed. Okay. So, with the proposed proffers, this is a summary of the proffers that are being offered. As mentioned, there'd be a maximum of no more than 120 single-family detached dwelling units. There would be, the proffers would establish the character and quality of architectural design of the homes. They would require to construct the tot lot prior to occupancy of the 60th unit, require right-of-way dedication, transportation improvements on Holly Corner Road, require the phasing of site access, as I reviewed, and require some restrictive covenants on the, on the site, and the cash contributions, as I've already reviewed. Looking at the overall evaluation, positives, it's consistent with the land use recommendations of the comp plan, consistent with the established development patterns. Proffers would ensure the use would be consistent with the surrounding properties. Mitigation of schools, public safety, and transportation impacts, which are considered reasonable. It's consistent with infrastructure phasing policies in the comp plan related to parks, libraries, and general government. And the building designs are consistent with many of the architectural design guideline recommendations. With negative aspects, the planning commission has expressed that the application may be premature, as Hartwood Elementary School is exceeding available capacity, and the commission was also concerned with the current conditions of Holly Corner Road, and being able to handle additional traffic in a safe manner. Overall, staff is supportive of the application and recommends approval with the proffers proposed. And on November 14 of last year, the planning commission voted six to zero to one to recommend denial. And I'll take any questions at this time.
Doobin Heffer.
A lot of num, excuse me, a lot of numbers. How many homes could be built on this property if it was A1?
16.
16. How many could be built on it if it was R1?
As...
It's pretty flat.
Yeah, it's, um... 48.6 times 1.5, so that would roughly 70, roughly, doing the quick math in my head.
And are they building the maximum number they could build under R3?
R2, no. They're, they're not going up to the max.
What's the, what's the number they're building?
120, which is equivalent to 2.5 units per acre.
Stafford, Stafford, Stafford Lakes, what is that zone?
That's zoned R1.
Okay. Why? And this is a question I had before. Why are they not zoning it in the same category, or asking to zone it in the same category as the neighborhoods or next to it, and are getting, or asking for R2, which almost, not quite doubles the number of homes? Is that the reason?
It may be, a factor may, and I defer to the applicant, but when Stafford Lakes Village was, was approved, R1 zoning allowed twice as much. They allowed three dwelling units per acre. And since then, the density was cut in half for R1. So, so that R1 project is denser than what you would see today.
So, that, but that's the reason they, they went to R2, because that becomes similar to what it used to be in R1? Is that a fair statement?
It could be, but also then the comp plan does support up to three units an acre as well, you know? So, that, that could be another factor.
The most difficult part of this whole thing for me is, is that we have a road that's already failing, and we're going to dump more traffic on a road that's already failing. I, to me, I, it's, it's a hard thing to, to swallow, that we're giving them more units than what R1 requires, and we're dumping them on a failing road that's going to be, even with the improvements they've approved, it's still going to be failing. You know, I could go on and on about the schools and the, and the surrounding neighborhoods. I don't think they're sufficient. We said that it meets the parks and recreational. To me, that little tot lot doesn't, doesn't do that. So, we're going to have 120 homes with a little tot lot is their ability to, to get out of their, their neighborhood, or take their kids to a swing. I mean, I, I don't know. I don't know. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. You've already answered my question about the R2 versus R1. Is the applicant present to present, make a presentation? Go on up, Sam.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and the members of Board Supervisors. My name is Sam Rochalaby. I'm with Development Consulting Services, and I'm here representing the Holly Corner Associates. I'm going to just hit a few points, or questions that were asked, without having to go through the whole presentation. Again, with the R1 versus R2, exactly, I think what Mike said was correct. We were trying to match what was Stafford Lakes, and at the time when Stafford Lakes was done, R1 zoning allowed for double the amount, even on the comprehensive plan when it was adopted. And this parcel was put in the USA, which was back in 2016, it was a three and a half units per acre. And we came in at 2.55, and that's the reason why I went to R2, to kind of match, even though we're a little lower density, we wanted to match what's there. That was kind of the idea of being consistent with the development. With regard to Holly Corner Road, in terms of the improvements, one of the things that we did is, obviously, Holly Corner is a tight road, which is no different than any, a lot of roads in Stafford County, unfortunately. I live off of Richards Ferry Road, which is 16 and a half feet, and I went out and measured it. And we have twice as much developments there further, at the end of it. But what we did is, we looked at, the, the reason that failing at the intersection is when you come out on Holly Corner Road, most of the traffic is trying to go right, going towards 95. But if you have a car that wants to go left, basically, they sit there, and they block everybody who sits behind them, waiting. So, that makes the level of service really pretty bad. So, that's the reason why we decided to put that turn lane. And even though it is still F, I know, I'm not sure of the exact numbers, but I think to be able to have level service C or better, I think you have to have, your queue needs to be, I think, less than 70 feet or 75 feet, and we can verify that. In our case, without doing anything, it'll be almost 300 feet back up with the lanes that we're doing, or the additional lane. It will take it down to 160, and that's at full buildout. So, we're cutting it down quite a bit, and that's just how the length of cars that will back up. And the same thing with the, going the right-hand turn, which will back up, you know, quite a bit. Again, this improves, because now people don't have to wait for someone turning left, and they can just keep going. So, is it improving it to make it level service C or D, or, you know, or better? No, it's not. And mainly, the only way to do that is, you would have to have a light, and of course, with the traffic council there, we talked to VDOT, and they said there's, you're not even close to getting any kind of the, the numbers that you need to be able to have a signal. Just hitting quickly on, on terms of the proffers. Again, this, this project today generates to the county about $2,600 in tax revenue. When this project is done, it's going to be almost $400,000 in tax revenue. There's, we are spending almost $250,000 to widen that portion of Holly Corner Road. There's almost $1.8 million in proffers, and again, we feel that it's reasonable with the schools, even though there is capacity, and that was one of the concerns that the planning commission had at the time, because there was no capacity. But now, you know, there is capacity. We still feel it's reasonable, because as more children come in and more needs, there's going to be a need for it. And again, however, if the county does feel like they want to use some of that money to improve Holly Corner, that's, that's up to them. We did meet with, with, with the residents at Stafford Lakes. We did, you know, in terms of with, with their HOA, we went over the connection, because there was some concern about the connection. Obviously, that's the reason why we put interparcial connection, because you want people to be able to go from parcel to parcel. We did talk to the neighbors. We did, we had a meeting. We had, at the HOA, we met with them, and they, at least the people that we discussed, seemed to have no issue with that.
Yes, Ms. Bonkey.
So, Mr. Rochalaby, do you have a letter, something from the HOA at Stafford Lakes that indicates what their position was on the interparcel connector?
Correct. Yes, we do have one.
Okay. And I don't see that in our package. Is that in our package?
It was in a staff report.
Okay. Okay, maybe it is in there, and I missed it.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what page, but yeah, but it was, it was definitely in there, because we did receive a letter from them. As a matter of fact, it was interesting enough, because we had, you know, we went back again later and decided that we wanted to have another meeting, and they, they kind of said, "We've been through this, you know, already. We don't, you know, there's no reason to have a discussion." So, we actually handed out letters to neighbors that are all within that vicinity, close to where the entrance would be, not all 700 people, but, you know, houses, but the ones that are close, and basically invited them to come again, any questions or anything else, and we had no one show up.
Hmm. That's very interesting. Okay.
Yeah. And like I said, so the letter is, is part of the staff. It's attachment 13, I think, if you have that.
Thank you.
Okay. So, anyway, I won't take too much time. I just wanted to highlight those points, and after the public hearing, if there's any more comments, unless there's questions, I'll be glad to...
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Bonkey.
Um, just, I just want to differentiate, because I, you made a comment about Richards Ferry Road.
Yes.
And I think the difference between Richards Ferry and Crane's Cor, or Holly Corner is, you know, there are a lot of by-right subdivisions out on Richards Ferry, so the Board of Supervisors didn't have a say in those projects. And in this particular case, it's a rezoning, so we do have a say. And you're right, the roads, neither of these roads are where we would like them in Stafford County. But there is a difference between by-right versus rezoning.
Sure. No, and I understand that, obviously, like I said, but also, there is a lot of commercial on Richards Ferry Road, which is kind of very interesting, that there's commercial poppy back there, with coming out with tractor-trailers, buses, you know, so there's, there's quite a bit of, so...
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. I do have a couple of speaker cards. Once again, remind everyone that you have three minutes. When you come to the podium, please state your name and your address. The green light will come on when you get down to a minute. The yellow light will come on. The red light will indicate it's time for you to wrap up your comments. Please confine your comments to this subject, and that's the Burton Farm Holly Corner Manor project. My first speaker card is Jennifer Hofstey.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Stafford Hofstey, 1143 Holly Berry Road, which is off of Holly Corner. And I'm concerned, because how many accidents are there on 17 and Holly Corner at that intersection? Because they didn't mention that. It wasn't mentioned on, what time was that meeting that you had set for Stafford Lakes? Because depending on people who commute at Stafford Lakes, they could have possibly not been able to attend that meeting. As of today, there doesn't seem to be very many people, my friends and neighbors, that I know are looking for this. And part of that was because the sign was like this. And part of that was because the sign was like this until earlier this afternoon. You couldn't tell that there was a public hearing for this road. I have pictures from Friday on it. If you'd like to see my phone, I would happily show you. My question is, yes, with these improvements, we're going to be still at an F, but with the second lane, are we going to be able to C to turn right and turn left off of this intersection? The school safety is an issue. Public safety is an issue with fire trucks. And how are they going to get in safely? What if something happens on the road? We have no way of getting out because of the reservoir. This is something that we do not want on this road. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker card is James Kingman.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is James Kingman. I reside at 55 Country Manor Drive in the Stafford Lakes subdivision. I have the privilege every single day to see the growth and development of this county firsthand. And it's exciting to watch. And it's rare, in the course of my responsibilities, that I have moments of pause. But unfortunately, this subdivision is giving me pause as a nearby resident. Mr. Rochalaby, I'll start off with the letter that he indicated was handed out to residents. That was not an invitation, at least the letter I received as a nearby resident, to Country Manor and Wild Rose. That was not an invitation to attend a hearing. It was a letter before any public hearing that gave the layout of the development and basically said, we're coming. We don't want to be part of your HOA. Thank you for your time. Was essentially the context of the letter. And that brought up a big firestorm throughout the neighborhood and then we started having meetings. And then we met with the planning commission and you've heard about the issues on Holly Corner Road. I don't need to rehash that. I want to bring up, though, and I can tell you this from daily experience, is what's put on paper and plans is never reality. If you look at that neighborhood and you understand the area, the bulk of that traffic is not going to go toward Holly Corner Road. In fact, the bulk of traffic that already comes down Holly Corner Road, turns onto Country Manor, cuts down morning mist, usually at a high rate of speed with pedestrian traffic and bus stops every morning, passing by three different parks, the parks that will likely support this community because the tot lot's going to be too small. That being said, you've done very well with your development. The people in that neighborhood can get to Walmart, Lidl, and McDonald's, and eventual ABC store without ever going through a traffic light. And I assure you that this new neighborhood will do the same. And our HOA funds will support their use of our parks in the nearby time. Overall, my biggest objection to this is simply public safety. The roadway risks, from my professional experience, are dangerous. I don't let my wife drive down that road with my children. I have a work-issued vehicle and I don't take it down that road because it's unnecessary with a four-lane divided highway of Village Parkway directly nearby, which gives me better controlled access and safer access to Warrenton Road every day. These residents, these future residents, will use that same way, I'm sure of it, coming down Country Manor Drive to Village Parkway. And that's my largest opposition, is we can talk about numbers of vehicles that will be going down Holly Corner Road and that being the main access, but rest assured, it won't be. It'll be Village Parkway and Country Manor Drive. I'm not opposed to development. And you guys have worked day in and day out to give this county great development. And like I said, I get to witness that and it's a privilege. But I don't think this is smart development at this time. I applaud Mr. Rochalaby and his efforts. And I don't want to say that I don't support development in that area, but I don't support it in this manner, as you mentioned, with an R2, with this number of vehicles that are going to be coming through there every single day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's all the speaker cards I have. Is anyone on my right? Yes, please come on down.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Adams. I live at 34 Holly Berry Road. And I just want to talk about, it's not only that Holly Berry is going to be impacted, but also popular road and every, all the school-aged kids going to that way. That, there's already a problem there. Our road is super thin. I mean, we've had head-on collisions because majority of, if you drive anything that's not a compact car, they ride the lane because you cannot fit a full-size vehicle or truck on that lane. The road is super curvy. You can't even see around the curves most of the time. So it's a dangerous road as it is. And then you want to add more houses into it, which, we moved out there, once my husband retired, to get that country life. I was born and raised here, so I've seen Stafford grow. And we moved out on that side of Stafford for that country lifestyle. And it just feels like now it's becoming like Norstaffer, where you want to put more houses on top of houses. Holly Berry Road can't do the impact of that many houses. It's already at capacity now. It's dangerous. I have a 17-year-old son that drives it every morning. He gets pushed off the road. I've had to come out there to change his tires. So we're talking about, you know, possibly school-aged kids driving to school on these dangerous roads, and then let's add more people. The end of the intersection, you know, there's, it's dangerous. I mean, that could always be improved. I would love to see that improved. But adding more houses in this country area is just not the, not what anybody wants. The sign that they have out there for this meeting was like this, and it was pushed down half of the time because I had to stop and push it up. So I'm glad that everybody in Holly Corner, Stafford Lakes got notices, but nobody down Holly actually road, who will still be impacted, not, I'm glad that they did just the area around it, but there's a long road of people that are going to be impacted because that's our only road out of there. And if there's a storm, we're stuck there. So adding more vehicles is just not, it would impact us tremendously. I just don't want to see, I want that country lifestyle to still be in Stafford County. And it just feels like that's what we're taking away. We're just, how many houses can we put in an area? And I just don't want to see that happen to Stafford County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right? Yes, sir.
My name's Frank Adams. I live at 34 Holly Berry Road. First off, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak, Chairman and the board. I apologize for my appearance, as my wife previously said, the sign was that big and we really, a lot of people were not aware of this at all. We've lived at 34 Holly Berry Roads for over a year and a half. We bought down here to move from the urban sprawl to try to slow things down. We wanted to live in Stafford County. My wife was born and raised here and we wanted to raise our children here. I have a 17-year-old son who learned to drive on Holly Berry Road. That's the only reason I feel safe with him even driving that road. I drive a full-size Ford F-150. It's impossible to get down that road if there's a large truck, a dump truck, any kind of emergency vehicle. I've been ran off the road by fire trucks before on that road. It's absolutely impossible to get any full-size vehicles down that road. Every time I drive down that road, I am ran off of it. And I've been driving for 30 years. I just, I think any kind, unless they block Holly Corner Road off from that subdivision and take it all out Stafford Lakes, let them do that, let them have the HOA, they can have it, block it off from Holly Corner Road. Holly Corner Road cannot, we live about two and a half to three miles south of where they're talking, the proposed exit on the Holly Corner Road is. If a tree falls in between the Country Manor Drive and Stafford Lakes and our subdivision, which is down on Holly Corner Road, Holly Corner Estates, we can't get out of there. We cannot get out of there as it is, let alone all that traffic. It's going to make it even more dangerous cutting down, call it, I'm sorry, cutting down Country Manor Drive and going out that way. A lot of people go out that way already because they're in fear of the road and fear of getting out of that other part of the road. And that section right there is one of the worst sections there is because there's dips, there's several dips and really sharp curves going from their proposed exit on the Holly Corner Road to Route 17. That's one of the worst sections of the roads there is. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on my right? Anyone on my left? Please, come on down.
Ladies and gentlemen, again, Michael Park in 15 Palace Lane. If I'm correct, I heard the gentleman say that the new standard for school capacity analysis was to use design capacity and not program capacity. And I recall very clearly that in the recent redistricting kerfuffle that happened, a lot of that happened because Ark Bridge Consulting used design capacity and not program capacity. Design capacity is fine if you want to build a refugee shelter, but if you want to take into account the fact that some classes have to have smaller sizes due to either English is a second language or other considerations, program capacity is the only yardstick you can use. So to say that the schools now have greater capacity because we measure with design capacity is something that I would hope would draw objection from every one of the board members. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on my left?
Good evening. I'm Elaine Callender from 622 Lancaster Street in Falmouth. I don't live out this way, but I've followed residential growth in the county since 1980 and I've got some pretty strong opinions about it. I'm glad to have the opportunity to comment on a reclassification from A1 agricultural zoning to R2 resident, urban residential, because I'd like to make the point that Stafford needs to retain agricultural lands and open space. I have always felt that way, but my stance on this has strengthened of late as I've come to believe Stafford should encourage more agricultural uses, certainly not less. Even our local grocery stores seek out locally grown produce because the public more and more demands that. Why truck in vegetables from the Midwest when they can be grown right here at home? We even have a food cooperative opening in Fredericksburg that will be seeking out local farm produce. Stafford has wonderful farmland. Out in the Midwest, they're getting flooded out and can't farm successfully at times. Why build up our farmland with more houses that add students to crowded schools? Why contribute more automobiles to already clogged roads? We need balance in Stafford between housing, commercial, open space, and farmland. There was a time when Stafford needed more housing. Now, other than affordable workforce housing for people like our teachers and public safety personnel, we need to reduce the building of houses. There are certainly way more houses approved already than we need or that will benefit our community. So I hope you will vote no on this reclassification. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left?
Ruth Carloni, 300 Mount Olive Road. Your little brief here does not give, does not give the reduction on the, not the reduction, but the play area, the tot lot, could, when it's the developer's time to talk, no way in holy, you know what, should we be allowed someone to wait till there's so many units in place where people are paying their rent or buying the place to have to wait till the 30th or the 60th unit to be able to have a place for their kids to play? Now, I don't know how in the heck this started, doing this. This happens in a couple of years now about the tot lot business. Anyway, I think that's outrageous. Another thing, there's no compelling reason for this rezoning. It's surrounded by A1. You even say this here. There is no reason to give a rezoning to, I just, this really is something else. I was going to try and say a few more things, but it's time that you all take a look now. Your comp plan has been in place. It is now time to have at least the beginning of a five-year look at where we are and what you've approved and where we'll be, say, 10 years now, from now. I was looking at the IWR and I invite all of you to look at it, too. I'm quite serious. When you look at the units that have come through here are still being looked at that haven't been built out yet. Greystone, Kavalaog Mill Road, Saratoga Woods, Holly Corner now, Willow Run. These are, you need to take a look, stop right now. No more rezonings, I mean, reclassifications. Take a look at where we are to look towards changing the comp plan or adjusting it and updating it. It's outrageous what's on the programs right now to be built. Anyway, I hope you reconsider and listen to some of the wiser people, not wiser, I won't say that, but people that did more research on the planning commission to look at where we are today. Okay, that's it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on my left like to address the board on this? Anyone else in the chamber? That said, I'll bring it back to the applicant if you'd like to address any of the citizen concerns.
I guess I'll try to make a couple of comments just to, and I will start with, I guess, the last comment about the tot lot. I mean, typically, the reason that there's a number of units is, you know, you don't want to build it too early when construction is going on because you're still building roads, you're building, you know, lots and things could change and shift. That's why I usually put a certain number to get things established and then you build the tot lot or as a community pool or whatever. So that's one of the reasons why it's not intended to save money or to say anything just to, just making sure the planning is done properly. With regard to, you know, some of the neighbors or some of the people that talked about the safety, we discussed that, you know, obviously the roads, you know, it is a narrow road. I'm not going to sit down and say it's not. From the statistics that were mentioned, there was 13 accidents in three years. Obviously, that's 13 more than should be, but unfortunately, you know, even roads that are wider on 17 and 95, there's accidents every day. And there are what, eight lanes and six lanes and everything else? So unfortunately, things will happen there. With regard to one of the gentleman that said about the letter, I'll be glad to provide a copy of the letter that was sent out to people. I don't remember it off the top of my head, but there was a time and place to meet and besides just because there was actually more than once those letters sent out. But I will make sure that I will get copied to the board to see that.
Yes, Ms. Bonkey?
So, Mr. Rochalaby, on that note, were the letters sent to everybody in Stafford Lakes or just those people that were right there on the interparcel connector?
There was multiple notifications. Originally, we did is we notified the homeowner association and they send out to people in the community. We actually set up in their little clubhouse, we gave them plans and they set up so people can go by and look at it and see it.
Okay.
And then we sent out the notification from the candidate, went to almost, pretty much the majority of the neighbors. And then what we did when there was some concern during the planning commission about some of the people with the interparcel connection, we went ahead and everybody that was in that street that, you know, we went, I think, I want to say, you know, maybe 10 houses or 15 houses in either direction, basically the immediate people that will see that impact. I think the total was, might have been 40 houses or 50 houses. And we sent to those as a separate meeting to basically invite them to come and specifically talk about, you know, what was going on.
Okay.
And I'll get the paper trail. Again, we've been working on this for, you know, quite some time.
That's fine. Okay, thank you.
I'm trying to see if there's anything else. So again, you know, traffic, like I said, I, you know, I understand the concerns there and I truly feel that, you know, yes, what we're doing on Holly Corner Road is not going to fix, at least on the intersection, it's not going to fix the width of the road, but it will help with the traffic flow as a whole. And with regard to, you know, to the units, Stafford County, again, I've been a Stafford County resident in Hartwood, as a matter of fact, for the last 30 years. And I've seen, you know, there has not been many rezonings in Hartwood or frankly, in the county in several years. And unfortunately, what happened is it did not slow down residential. All it did is we've had this glut of three-acre lots everywhere, which basically people still build, longer roads, everything else that's happening. And yes, maybe not the same densities, but the same issues. And the only difference is the county is not getting any money to be able to offset some or mitigate some of the impacts. So this site particularly was studied by the planning commission back in 2016 during, you know, and it had to include it part of the USA, is part of the comp plan. So hopefully, again, when they did that, and as far as I remember, or at least looking back, the votes were all 7-0, that they'd studied it enough to make sure that there was a reason why this should be included. You know, so again, I hope that... So again, I hope that the board finds, you know, acceptable, you know, again, that we're, we try to do everything we can to mitigate what, any impacts, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any other questions? Ms. Sheldon?
I'm sorry, Mr. Shalaby. You mentioned earlier about, and I understand from the schools that we have to go by design capacity, so I don't, I understand that part. But you also mentioned that $1.7 million you're giving to the schools could be reallocated. Is, can we actually do that on a proffer? Don't you have to allocate it?
I mean, again, right now, we feel, you know, we feel this is a reasonable proffer because right now, there's no, there's no need at the schools immediately today. But we feel, again, with the, with the bill that there'd be more kids and more students, that's why we basically feel that, you know, the money should be, you know, put there. But I would just make it as a gesture that if, if the county feels that they want to take a certain amount of that money, you know, for a more immediate need for the road, that's, that's obviously up to the board and up to the county. But basically, we feel like, again, the money should be allocated to the schools.
All right, thank you.
I'll refer to the county attorney, but I believe that that decision would have to be made before we voted. Is that correct? If we vote, let's say we approve this and the proffers are going to the schools, we can't change it afterwards, correct?
Mr. Chairman, I will refer to the applicant's proffer statement if they're trying to give the county flexibility, it needs to be incorporated in there. I don't currently see it as I'm scanning it, but it does not mean that it's not there.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, Ms. Shalaby.
Thank you.
Just a quick for staff, you identified 13 accidents on Holly Corner, three and from the entrance to Route 17.
Yes.
Does this include any accidents that have happened at the intersection of Holly Corner and Route 17?
I'm not positive. I, I'm, I would guess that this is focused mainly on Holly Corner Road, and I think it's probably not getting into what's happened on Route 17.
Yeah, I'd like to see what's actually happened on Route 17 with cars pulling out. I firmly believe a traffic light has got to be put in there. I just requested it for the third time last week, and VDOT just turned around and walked away. They're not going to do it, period. And I don't, you know how they are. If you don't meet their warrants, they're not going to do it.
Right. Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do that.
I want to refer this to our next meeting. I need Mr. Shalaby's permission to do that because this project has timed out. So if you have no problem, I want to refer this to the, defer this to the second meeting in September. I have a, that's a motion. I have a second, well, Mr. Cohen, any discussion? Yes?
Yeah, I just have one more comment. Based upon what you said, would you also consider those warrants, calculating those warrants that could be from this project for, to meet the ones for the light? If we put those two together? Way off, no matter what? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bonkey?
Yeah, I would just like to say, I want to describe to you what I saw today when I drove down Holly Corner. I'm coming from Interstate 95 up Warrington Road, making a left turn. As I'm sitting there, I've got two 18-wheelers bearing down, coming south, and I turned after them. They're doing at least 55 miles an hour. Go down that road, and I'm holding on for dear life because there are so many places where you can run off the road. And I said to myself, wow, I thought I'd seen it all on Mountain View Road. I hadn't. There were embankments where I'm, as you all said, you're moving over. Had there been an F-150 or whatever somebody described, we would, we would have side-swiped each other. So me, in good conscience, I can't add any homes on that road. And as I said when I was, I went down there, actually ran into somebody that I know that lives down past Stafford Lakes, and I pulled in her driveway, turned around. I couldn't even get out of there, and I was going forward, not backwards. And I looked three times each way. Do I look that way last, or do I look that way last? And that was at 11:45, and that's why I was late for the CEDC meeting because I was over there checking out the road. I hadn't been on that road in 10 years. And the board knows, I'm, I'm a visual person. I got to see it, and I wanted to go see what's Holly Corner look like, and it had been a number of years. I also have to say to you, I have an interparcial connector happening at a subdivision next to where I live. It's a by-right subdivision. And I had a public meeting at Falmouth Fire Department and sent letters to everybody in the subdivision and all those on the outskirts of it. And I had at least 100 people at the meeting, and nobody was in favor of that interparcial connector. They don't really get a chance because this is a by-right, but I would be surprised if Stafford Lakes people are in favor of an interparcial connector because of the things that you all have mentioned. So I just wanted to share that since I had driven out there, and it's just a really tough road. I know our emergency vehicles have had problems out there, and I, I think we would just be making a situation worse. Thank you.
Okay, remind everybody that we are motioning to defer this. In Mr. Shalaby's defense, I know he did contact the HOA. I know the HOA apparently didn't contact everyone else, but that's another day. Okay, I have a motion and a second. This is voting for deferral until our next meeting. Please cast your votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 26, Planning and Zoning, amend and reordain the Stafford County zoning ordinance by amending the proffer conditions on a portion of tax map parcel number 37-25, Zone B2 Urban Commercial. Mr. Zara.
Okay, if I can have the computer again? Thanks. Okay, so this is a proffer amendment for Project Number Centport Gateway. So this is a request to amend proffer conditions on a portion of tax map parcel 37-25. It's a property that's Zone B2 Urban Commercial. This would modify access and use restrictions to allow for the development of retail and hotel uses on the property. The applicant's Jacob Manovich with Clark Lemming as the agent.
Excuse me. Mr. Lemming, this is the same piece of proffer we discussed the other day?
Yes, sir, it is.
I will recuse myself. For the county attorney, I own the adjoining property. So I will recuse and turn the chair over to Mr. Dudenheimer.
Okay, so the, the site is highlighted and located on the south side of Centport Parkway. It's approximately 800 feet west of the access ramp to southbound Interstate 95 and located in the Hartwood election district. The parcel's in two parts, bisected by Centport Parkway. The southern portion on 44.5 acres is a subject of the request. It's highlighted in red. This is an image of the zoning map. The property is currently zoned B2 with proffers. So the proffers limited the development of the site.
Ms. Maurer?
Okay, so I have a ton of questions on this, so let me apologize. Actually, I'm not going to apologize. Can you go back to that last map?
Sure.
Where was Mine Road, the extension of Mine Road supposed to extend? From there all the way down to Enon Road?
Yes.
Yes.
And this is the site over here on, on the right? Okay.
Yes.
So it was supposed to go from Centport Parkway all the way down to, to Enon Road? Or Centport Parkway didn't exist?
It's, the, the plan is, so it would basically extend, you know, so this ends up being a four-way intersection in some manner. And so it would extend on down, eventually connecting, I think the, the plan shows it some way, either with connecting to Enon or working its way towards plantation.
Have we done away with wanting that Mine Road extension?
Uh, no.
No?
It's still on the transportation plan.
So we still want the Mine Road extension in the transportation plan?
Yes, yes.
Okay, because originally, and when I read the proffers, that Mine Road extension was proffered with this.
Yes.
And what was the value of that proffer?
I don't know if we have a specific estimate.
Okay, but they just did away with it with no corresponding transportation improvements? I mean, I understand the right and left turn lanes and all that other good stuff, but, but, all right, continue.
I'll, I'll mention, I'll get into it, yeah. So, so, you know, the, as I mentioned, the proffers limited the development of the site to primarily office and hotel uses, so envisioned mainly as an office park with conference center and supporting hotels and retail uses. The access directly onto Centport Parkway was restricted, and it was required to occur via an interparcial connection to off-site property to the west, combined with partial construction of the extension of Mine Road. That's the red dash line on this map. And, and yeah, the transportation plan shows it continuing on further to the south. To date, no construction activity has occurred on the subject parcel. So the proffer amendments would modify the type of commercial development permitted on the site. The revised general development plan you see here identifies a new development concept. It includes 380,000 square feet of retail uses.
More questions?
More questions. So on the generalized development plan, what I couldn't ascertain between the first and the second of the GDP is, what is the difference in the square footage? Was there a change in the square footage?
I'd have to go back and, I don't think it was that, that far off.
So relatively the same?
The big change of the uses because the original GDP was more primarily office uses.
Okay.
Of a similar square footage.
Are they still proffering a GDP with these proffers? Is, they're intent to proffer a GDP?
They are proffering aspects of this, not necessarily the layout. So, you know, you see a large retail center building, and that's not necessarily what will end up.
Okay, so there is no reference to the GDP in the proffer statement?
There's a reference as it relates to the improvements.
A GDP.
Yeah, this, well, it's to this GDP, but it says related to different elements like the access.
So when, if you actually read the proffer statement, because I went through, and there was a reference to the original GDP, and they crossed all that out, and then they reference GDP, but it makes no reference to this specific GDP?
Okay. That'd probably be, yeah, then it'd probably be advisable to probably have that, this GDP, end date reference, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Continue.
Yes.
Thank you.
So as, you know, mentioned, the retail uses may include this, the single 320,000 square foot retail center building. The idea, the concept here was multiple retailers would be under one roof, and to meet the parking requirements, it'd be covered parking proposed on the ground level under the retail center, probably similar to what you have at, like Ikea in Woodbridge. The GDP also depicts how access will be provided to the site off of Centport Parkway. You know, as mentioned, one of the primary amendments would delete the requirement that access be provided via interparcial access to the west along with the construction of Mine Road. New, new proffers would permit primary access via the existing Centport Parkway following construction of specific improvements that would minimize impacts to the flow of traffic on the road. The segment of Centport Parkway, it's designed as a limited access roadway designated that way by VDOT. That restricts access to, to adjacent properties. That's why it originally was approved in the manner it was. So to obtain a break in limited access, the applicant had to go, and they requested and obtained approval from the Commonwealth Transportation Board to get access from Centport Parkway in this location onto this site. The, the traffic, transportation impact analysis, which went along with, with that request and approval, assumed the amount and type of development in this revised access, as you see as a show in this general development plan. The new proffer links the amount of development to occur on the site to the maximum amount estimated in the traffic study. Other amendments would revise the list of prohibited uses and modify building and design standards to be reflective of the new development concept. New standards would replace the original building elevations with these new elevations and require design and construction of all buildings on the property.
Yep, so, so in the proffer statement, just as a note, they have these uses prohibited under Section B, page 4 of 8, and they add uses permitted by right. And under uses permitted by right, they say although they are prohibiting it, adult businesses as defined by Stafford County zoning ordinance, I am not aware of anywhere in Stafford County where we allow adult businesses as a use by right. And so we need to clean that up also in the, we, we need to reflect that accurately. That should be under requiring a conditional use permit.
Okay.
She's asking all the questions I was going to ask.
I'm, I'm very concerned with the way this was written.
Okay.
I have, I have serious trust issues, and there are significant omissions and misstatements in here that I find concerning.
Okay, so the new standards would replace original building elevations with these new building elevations, require the design and construction of all buildings on the property to be in accordance with the specific architectural design standards and, and building materials referenced. Originally, the proposal would have deleted several environmental protection standards, including requiring walls to be located 20 feet outside the limits of the RPA, proper treatment of acidic soils if encountered, groundwater technical study and mitigation plan, and physical delineation of clearing limits on the site prior to the grading plan approval. So at the planning commission meeting in response to concerns raised by staff and the commission, the applicant, applicant agreed to add these proffers back into the proffer statement. So these standards that were originally in the proffers will remain.
So go back to that last slide on the proffer amendments. There are a significant number of proffer amendments that we aren't kind of highlighting in here. Number one, the removal of the extension of Mine Road, which is of significant benefit to Stafford County. And the fact that this isn't mentioned in the briefing, nor is the value of the extension of Mine Road and the, and the elimination of the extension of Mine Road in this briefing, I, I think that's misleading to the citizens of Stafford County. In addition to that, there's a significant amount of improvements to the water and sewer that were in the original proffer statement that was of considerable cost. I think we need to see the value of those proffers, especially since those were also eliminated. So we have raised significantly across Stafford County the water and sewer rates, and part of that has to do with the fact of the significant improvements that we have made. And here, they were supposed to proffer a significant number of improvements in that area, and we are summarily deleting them. We're not mentioning that to the public, nor are we mentioning the value of the proffers that we're giving up. And so, so this I find very troublesome. And we need to highlight, when we do these proffer amendments, we need to do a one-for-one. We are giving up all of this value, and while in this particular case, we're getting very little. And, and so we need to be very transparent in the public on the value of these proffers that they are asking us to eliminate.
All right. Okay. So with the evaluation, staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the land use recommendations in the comp plan for commercial development along major roadways. The site's proximity to Centport Parkway and Interstate 95 justifies the proposed commercial use of this property. The proffers ensure the ultimate maximum amount of development is linked to the amount of traffic evaluated in the traffic study. The project does establish a plan for accessing the site in a manner that will have minimal impacts to the limited access roadway, Centport Parkway. And also, proposed use is compatible with the Stafford Regional Airport operations. The site is within one of the outer airport impact zones around the Stafford Regional Airport. The airport authority provided comments and noted that the proposed development is a good match with the airport environment, and the proposed building design incorporates recommendations of the neighborhood design standards plan. Staff does recommend approval of the application with proffer conditions pursuant to ordinance O-1943. O-1943. On July 10th, the planning commission voted six to zero to recommend approval. And I'll answer any questions.
Any other questions? Mr. Cohen?
Mike, and I guess this is just, as long as I've been involved in any of these boards, there's been two things that I keep getting. And A is that, and this is, I was on the bandwagon about this, is that regular retail's dying. And B, they will not build retail unless there's more rooftops. And last I saw, there's not a bevy of rooftops there, nor is there, other than Oak and Wall Two, there's not a lot of rooftops planned for that area. So, I, did staff look at those two things that sort of make people raise questions, or just, I just don't get it?
I think, and I may, might be good for the applicant to address this. I think it might be the, the concept that they're looking at. It might be more of a regional draw. And so, as opposed to more community-related retail, that does need the, the rooftops. But I may ask the applicant to justify kind of why they want to make this change and go in this, go this route.
Anybody else? Would the applicant like to speak? Hobble up. Limp up. You're actually doing pretty well for a guy with a knee replacement surgery only, what, 10 days ago?
Three weeks, three weeks tomorrow.
Three weeks, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Acting Chairman, members of the board. A little bit of background, and I'm happy to answer some of the questions that have been raised. This property was originally zoned in 2007. I don't think anybody here, Mr. Cavalier, you were on, you were missing it. You were on the board at that time. It was originally set up as an office park tech center. The reason for that is because of the access, the very limited access. There was no break-in access at that point along Centerport Parkway. And the only access that could be worked out was through the adjacent property, the original Centerport project. Some of you are familiar with Mr. Melrod and his partner who owned that. The, so the access was that you would come all the way down past the property, then the extension of Mine Road, and then come back into the property. Now, that wasn't conducive to most any kind of development. The property sat for a number of years. There's never been an agreement worked out with the other property owner for the right-of-way. And to my knowledge, the county's not gone out and acquired the right-of-way, which is a specific condition. Mr. Vanavich became involved with the property in 2015, and initially checked those possibilities to see if something could be worked out. It couldn't. And he determined that the only way to provide access to it, bear in mind, this is the property closest end to the interstate. This is the first one that people see. It's the closest one, and a place where most planners would consider an ideal place for retail, but for the limited access here. The board of supervisors, so we submitted an application to VDOT and to CTV to obtain a break in the limited access. And this board supported us in that break by resolution in 2016. Now, for three years, the applicant worked on this with VDOT, going through any number of iterations of access to this first-end site. That, that, the plan that you see before you, where you come to the end of, end of Centerport, make a brief turnaround, and then come into the site, is what VDOT has approved for this particular access. The, the access that is proffered here costs the applicant $3 to $4 million. So, it's not an insignificant improvement. Now, granted, the improvements are so you can get into the property. But the reason to get into the property is because the owner wants to put retail on the property. Now, there was a question about rooftops and whether or not there would be demand in this area. Just for your information, there are 500 vested units back further on the Centerport piece that's owned by Mr. Melrod. Now, but if you've read some of the newspaper articles, and there've been several of them that have come along since the acquisition of this property, but there've been several regional proposals that have been made. So, the idea for a site like this, this close to the interstate with the access that it would have, is that there would be a regional draw to it, rather than catering to local residential development, which is probably some ways off for this, for this particular area. Now, the proffer amendment application, there was something of a chicken or the egg question here. Most of the issues were transportation issues. So, there was no reason, we thought, to move forward with the proffer amendment until the issues with CTV had been worked out, and we obtained, if we could obtain, the break in limited access. Not an insignificant thing. The only other place in Stafford County that I'm aware of where we obtained a break in limited access is up on 610 for Stafford Marketplace. That main entrance at Stafford Marketplace was originally prohibited until CTV agreed that that could be used as an entrance. So, similar process that we went through here. Now, the proffer amendment itself, this, the applications before you tonight was actually filed in 2016, and was just put on hold until we could get the transportation issue satisfactorily worked out with VDOT. So, a good, good amount of work has gone into this, and questions along the way, how should the retail be set up in relation to the traffic issues? The traffic issues at this location are different than you'd find most places in the county. What's important here is the effect on the interstate, because of the proximity of the interstate, not wanting to back traffic up getting onto the interstate, or back traffic on the interstate up getting off. So, the improvements are all intended and designed to prevent that kind of scenario and permit the center to operate smoothly. For that reason, the, the, there's a, there's a square footage that's shown on your GDP, 380,000 square feet plus a hotel. For that reason, the development is actually tied to trips per day. And there's a proffer that requires that that be monitored on a regular basis, so that the traffic generated by this retail development does not exceed what it is that was, that was originally planned, and the improvements that were designed.
Ms. Bauer has a question.
So, what happens if the vehicle trips per day exceed? Do you tear down a building?
No, no. I think what you'd have to do is make additional improvements. The way the proffers are set up, VDOT has the ability to come in and say, this is, this is something else that has to be done in order to address that issue. Now, everybody's going to be monitoring it, so you will know well in advance of ever getting to that point whether or not something like this is in the, in the future.
Okay.
So, it's something that has been, that has been planned for. And you'll notice that VDOT, if you look at the proffers, VDOT actually has the ability to require certain additional studies that can be done here.
Well, they require additional studies, but what happens? There's, there's no, there's no clawback provision. So, if we exceed vehicle trips per day, do we stop building? Do we tear down a building? Do we, it just says that you're gonna monitor it. It doesn't say what happens if it exceeds.
Well, you have a proffer that says, that's the way it's going to be. The proffer says, this is how many trips per day there'll be, period.
Okay. But if it exceeds, then what happens?
I, then, you may be right. I'm not sure we know exactly. But you may be right that the county would be in a position to say, no more building permits until you get to that point, because you have an affirmative proffer that says, this is the number of trips per day you get, period. So...
Just one second. Ms. Rashida, and, and this is on, for page three of eight? Because I noticed that, I mean, it gives a limit, but it doesn't say what happens if you hit that limit, or exceed that limit. It just says there's a limit with no what happens if. I mean, it, it doesn't say we tear down a building. It doesn't say we stop building. It, it doesn't say.
Yeah. Let Mr. Zara bring something to your attention about the site plan.
How we monitor that type of, we've had proffers like this before. That's monitored by site plan approval. So, it's gonna all be always, you know, as, if there are multiple site plans, we're gonna track it by site plans. And you have to estimate it based on the use and the size, and base the trip generation on that. And so, they, you know, they couldn't get additional site, site plan approvals if they were gonna exceed.
So, do they have to reapply for site plan approval with each new building?
Well, if, if, no, no. If, if all the buildings are on one site plan, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna require...
And if all those buildings put together, then exceeds the vehicle trips per day...
Then they would not get, be able to get approval of that site plan.
Okay.
Yeah. We're not gonna approve the site plan if it's, if it's beyond it. We're gonna have, they're gonna have to provide a table.
At the time of site plan approval, but, so, so you, you approve a site plan, and you build building A, and then a couple of years later, you build building B. And, and so, and according to what I'm seeing here, is that you're gonna continuously monitor this?
No, well, it doesn't need to be continuously monitored, because it's all based on whatever is approved on that site plan.
And it's approved?
Yes. Yeah.
But if reality is different than that...
We're just gonna strictly go, we would go by what the site plan approved.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and the averages that, that are typical in the, in the, in the process.
This is, Mr. Vanavich, let him, if you wanted to address your...
Ms. Chairmanwoman, as now spending three years... Sorry. I apologize. Spending three years now dealing with VDOT, I find myself an expert on VDOT issues. And just want to relay as a, as a layperson, when they were going through the study, they required extensive models and computer simulation of the retail traffic that's generated by a certain square footage. So, they took that 400,000 square feet, and they put it up against, they have tables, VDOT has tables of how much traffic a mall generates versus how much traffic a restaurant generates versus how much traffic normal strip retail generates. And they took the worst-case scenario, the most heavily-used traffic that they have in their calculations, which is the mall traffic, and they applied it towards this site. And we had to develop, with their help, a traffic-transportation model that accommodated that use, and that didn't take it down to a certain level of, you know, A from B and whatever, whatever it was. So, what you see today, that, that 400,000 square feet is with their heaviest traffic computations. That's what the site can support being a mall site, having the highest traffic counts that you can have compared to the malls that they have in their studies from other parts of the state and the country.
So, are you thinking for a mall here?
So, thank you for, and I can address your, your question as well. We've, we've had quite the process in, in the last three years. Had I known what we were about to jump into, I'm not sure I would have done it. Three years ago, my answer to you would have been, absolutely. We were interested in doing something creative and something that, that the country has not seen before. It's a new type of concept. I can't say to you today that's 100% certainty. The retail world has changed drastically in three years. I can't tell you what it'll be, because we, we stopped marketing it after we first acquired it three years ago, when we, when we found out the trouble that we had to go through.
They owned the property, incidentally. They went to sell the mall on the property.
Correct. So, we, we stopped all marketing after we realized the kind of intensity that we had to go through with VDOT. Remember, with VDOT, we had to go not only satisfy the regional office, we had to go up through all levels. The governor was involved. It had to go to CTV, which is the organization above VDOT, which votes. And this is, from what they tell me, the first grant in access, in limited access, they have provided in 10 or 15 years. So, it's a very unique structure that they, that they had us go through, and it was a lot of scrutiny.
And the important thing, I think, is that the transportation experts are the ones that have studied this. And the proffers that you have before you, the transportation improvements, were the conditions that they made part of their permit for the break in limited access. So, that's why that came first, and then all of that was incorporated into the proffers. And of course, VDOT has reviewed all of these proffers. So, your transportation experts, I think we would all concede, particularly at the level this went to, that this has been studied to the nth degree as far as transportation is concerned. Now, where, where were we on, on other matters? Are there, are there other questions? I think buying, the most important things, I think, are these. What was set up before was not gonna work. This is the opportunity the county has to start something in Centerport. There's a lot stacked up there. You've got some vested development in back. Nothing has happened back there. This is the closest end property, and made a lot of sense to Jacob that this would be the first one that would develop. If you don't develop the first one, what are you doing with the ones further back? So, that was, that was the, his purpose and his vision for this particular piece of property. Now, one thing to bear in mind, there is another smaller piece of this same parcel. It was split by Centerport Parkway on the other side. So, there's some additional development. It's a much smaller land bay that's not subject to this proffer. But there's additional land, actually, that is owned by the same company on both sides of the, of Centerport Parkway here. This just involves the southern side of Centerport Parkway. Okay?
Excuse me. Several years ago, I remember reading something about, I thought, a development here which had to do with the building community, right? All the mortgage companies, you know, you name it, have, are kind of a one place where you shop for anything you were gonna do if you were gonna build something. A house, an extension, buy a house, whatever. Is that the concept that you were looking at now?
Yeah. Why don't you talk to him a minute about that, Jacob, and where you got the idea and what happened with it?
Our, our original plan, and still maybe our, our plan, is to do a home center. And the home center is a concept that we saw in Canada, in Toronto, that's done very well. And what they did was they aggregated a lot of the building services uses for your homes that today generally go in the back of strip centers, or go in the back of industrial warehouses, the marble guys, the bathroom guys, the, the vanities guys. And they pulled them together and made a show, a retail showroom out of it. And there's been a, a big interest in the general community with a lot of shows on HDTV and others about improving your own house. And, and this becomes, feeds towards that whole atmosphere that's happening. That has, that was one of the themes we were interested in, and we did a trial balloon with, we got a lot of feedback nationally that there, there was interest. Again, that was three years ago. So, I just wanna make sure that's, we haven't done anything since.
It takes so long to get things approved in the development world these days, that sometimes these trains move on. But that was, that was his concept, and it got picked up in the Washington Business Journal and got some local publicity also. It was an idea, and he was exploring that. But that is, as Jacob says, that was three years ago.
And before we get off transportation on this, when you have multiple pieces, it's very difficult to have a vision and a concept. I mean, to me, this whole area development depends on the Mine Road extension down the Enon Road. It, it, it is a completion of a, of a concept we've had for many, many years. And without it, we don't have our north-south, you know, I, I think, I always worry about one in, one out to a development this size. That, that, I'm sorry. When you say you've had all the experts look at it, from my perspective, I've been working on this stuff for 15 years. I don't have a lot of confidence in that, because VDOT, who have all the engineers in the world, they're, they seem to lack common sense when it comes to how they look at stuff. So, I'm probably in trouble for saying it. But I, I've seen, I could look all over the county and point to where VDOT engineers, you know, remember where we ended the express lanes before Garrisonville Road, over my objection that, oh, the models showed it. So, I, I get concerned. I'm not as, one of these people that buy into that. I've seen too many mistakes made by that. So, one in, one out concerns me in how that works. And certainly, some kind of connection to a Mine Road extension that we know is coming would, would, you know, satisfy some of those, those concerns that I have.
You wanna address that briefly? There are other connections planned for this. The development of Mine Road is going to be controlled by the development of that property unless the county wants to take that right of way. But that is on a particular piece of property that has particular development rights. And when they go forward with that, you know, the extension will occur. But the access to this parcel, at least the initial access, is what VDOT was focused on, and is, is not dependent, because it's, because he has regional retail in mind, is not dependent on traffic coming from, from inland, so to speak, it would be coming from the interstate. Did you wanna say anything else about the access?
I was gonna say just two things. One is, as Clark said, it, it all depends on Mr. Melrod. He owns the land, and whenever he decides to develop that, that parcel's when you can get the extension of Mine Road. He's owned it for 25 years. So, if the county has a, a way to motivate him, you know, I'm not here to motivate you guys to do that, but that's, that's how you get your Mine Road extension.
The public thinks I can tell you what to do, and you'll do everything I say, so...
That's true. The, the second is, and maybe it helps, because I don't know if everyone here is familiar with the, the restricted access that VDOT has placed over Centerpoint, but VDOT, the, the whole reason we're, that we've had this issue is that from 95 to where Mine Road is, on both sides, VDOT has a restricted access, meaning they won't allow anyone to break into the right or to the left, probably forever. And the, the reason they did that was because they want a fast four-lane Centerpoint Parkway, and they don't want the traffic to slow down. The reason it took three years to get them to consider and approve this is because they've had it so long in the books that that is the, the, the way that Centerpoint should be. So, you will never probably have another access off Centerpoint between 95 and Mine Road, if that makes sense.
Basically, what, what Jacob is telling you is that... Basically, what Jacob is telling you is that.
Mr. Cohen?
Just a side issue, I'm going to move to the hotel. Figuratively, not literally, unless I really do something wrong somewhere. So is it theoretically possible with the retail world the way it is that A, the hotel is going to be elsewhere? Or B, I'm just looking at where it's located. It just, and you really didn't delve into any of the hotel issues.
Well.
So I wasn't sure, A, if your traffic issues dealt with a 76-room hotel. B, if with retail being different than what you envisioned, is it, now we're looking for a larger hotel? C, we're going to move the hotel over to where retail, the little chunky retails are, thereby leaving that whole area of, you know, that looks like where you shouldn't be building on it? Because it looks like there's, you know, wetlands and whatnot around it. We're going to leave it alone? I mean, so is that being considered or is it just, it just seems like this little triangle just put out there?
I think it's fair to say that there are some development challenges. And the biggest piece of usable land goes for the retail center. And that's what you need. The hotel is conducive to one of the other smaller land bays. But it is, that is factored into all the transportation calculations. Now, there is another bay on the other side of Centerport Parkway. But the access to that would be roundabout, all the way around. But at some point, that may be a site that develops as a hotel as well. And that was one of the areas that was originally, back in 2007, considered for a hotel site. But the important thing, I think, now is that the hotel, if there is a hotel that goes in there, that that is factored into the transportation calculations. So the most important things about this, I think, are that it's retail. This is the first guy, the first guy coming in. He's right there at the exit. So you do have some opportunities that you're not going to have further back on the property. And he's done his homework on the transportation. And notwithstanding your reservations, Mr. Dudenheffer, and your experience in transportation as well, the process that he went through here is second to none, that I've ever seen. Any rezoning applicant have to go through because of who he was working with and because of the level of their concern. So, you know, I don't think we could have come up with a more thoroughly vetted application, at least as far as the transportation aspect of it is concerned. And I think the staff sees that and understands the process we've been through. And we met very briefly with the planning commission when they saw this and got the presentation. We did put in some environmental proffers that the 2007 board was very interested in. And we got a letter at the last minute from one of the conservation trusts saying, please, don't do away with those proffers. So we put those back in. So I think all of the pieces are there. He's not sitting here saying he wants to do some apartments, you know, he wants a mixed-use development. This is 100% retail at a place that is at that intersection, the most conducive for retail. Bear in mind the four quadrants that you have there. You go over on the other side of the interstate and you've got very small land bays. I think Ms. Bumpke is familiar with, and there have been some other proposals for some of those smaller land bays over on that side, which are harder to work with even than what we have over here and generally smaller and topographically challenged as well. On the other side of Centerport Parkway is the much, is the smaller land bay that Jacob also owns. But you can't do anything like a retail center there. So at this intersection, within these four quadrants, visible from the interstate and at a place where the access is going to be conducive to that, this is the one land bay that you've got to work with for anything of any size. And he recognizes that and has a lot of vision. And now wants to, now that he's spent all of this time getting this set up, now wants to go out and find viable use for this thing. And I hope that everybody appreciates that, you know, this is not the only commercial, potential commercial corporate citizen of Stafford County that has had these problems. I mean, things take so long to get approved that the commercial world changes pretty dramatically. And we've seen that in some other areas. But he's set to go.
Ms. Shelton has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Couple of things. I really liked the regional transportation improvements that were in here. I really liked pedestrian improvements. I think that when I looked at what we had originally, those were exactly what Stafford County wants. I think that when you talk to several of the board members here, we recognize the pain that the industry is going through and in the past with getting things through the board. And we really want to change that. But I really need that mine road extension. It's hard for me to look past that, knowing what I know about transportation now. And so I really wanted to ask you if you can, if I can ask this, because someone's going to tell me I can't. But why did you, why did you take those out? And why did you remove the pedestrian improvements? I don't know why you took them out.
There's no issue with pedestrian improvements inside the area here. But remember, this is a large retail center. It's all contained within one building. So very different than what was proposed previously. Now, the other problem with that is that he's not in a place, remember, the first thing he did was to go talk with the property owners back there to see what was feasible. And, you know, we don't have an agreement. This whole proffer is contingent on getting that right of way now. So that's the main problem, is that it wasn't available. So, but mine, it'll come. It's just not within the control of this particular landowner.
What about the pedestrian bridge that was inside the parcel?
Well, Jacob, you don't have anything, he doesn't have any issue at all with pedestrian bridges. But what was proposed there before was basically an office park. An office park with a hotel and some meeting areas. And then very, I think only 10% commercial, just the commercial that was necessary to serve that. So it was basically to be a self-contained development that, you know, somebody, we don't, you know. It was a nice concept. We don't need any more of that in Stafford right now. We've got all the office we can use. So it wasn't going to happen. So the current proffers don't work is the main problem. They don't, and they don't work from a transportation standpoint. And I think that to say to the guy that's right there at the interstate and has developed this access to his property and gotten the approvals for that, to say to him, well, wait until the guy in back of you develops or, you know, you can work something out for this roundabout access. Now, the other problem with that, and there will be access eventually back there when that road comes in, but it's not particularly conducive to retail. You know, you picture, if you're familiar with the intersection, you would be going all the way down Centerport Parkway, turning left at the end and then coming in the backside. Now, that was what was proposed for the original office park, but that probably wasn't that big a deal for that because you didn't have people coming off of the interstate seeking to access what he had there. So that's.
I personally don't have a whole lot of interest in satisfying the people coming off of I-95. I have a personal interest in satisfying the people from Stafford County who will use this, you know. So I mean, so what Ms. Shelton is talking about is access for the people we represent and that pay taxes here. So we may, one, think it's wonderful getting all this more traffic on I-95, but we need to accommodate the citizens that are here. I mean, that's important.
And we don't argue with any of that, but he doesn't have the ability to do it. And this board, this board supported, is going and getting this break-in access, which, as you've heard, I think, is a pretty novel thing, that it's just not something that VDOT hands out at any particular time. So you have an opportunity here to have direct access to a land bay right at the interstate.
Ms. Bumpke.
So just clarification on one thing. You made a comment that you will be able to see this from the interstate. Did you mean, once you got off Centerport Parkway?
Yes, ma'am.
Or is it going to, it's not going to set up so high that people will be able to see it from the interstate?
I think that's correct. You would have the signage on the interstate, but you would be able to see it as soon as you get off of the interstate.
Correct, correct.
And you wouldn't, and you wouldn't be driving around the other, to the other side of it to get in.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
I don't know, how high would Stafford let us, let him put a sign up? But no, it's not visible from the interstate per se, too much foliage.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Anybody else? Nope, okay. We're going to move to the public hearing section of this. Okay, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this issue. Remember that everyone has three minutes to speak. The green light comes on when you start, the yellow light comes on when you have a minute left and the red light comes on, we please ask you to wrap up and sit down, so. All right, I'm rusty, you know? I'm a little rusty. All right, so do we have, anyone on our right-hand side like to speak to this issue? Anybody on the left?
Elaine Callender, 622 Lancaster Street in Falmouth. And the only comment I have regards mine road because we need that extension. I know that from experience. My husband commuted up 95 for 41 years and had to, many times, had to drive those narrow, country windy roads through central Stafford to get home because the highway was totally backed up. So we don't have enough alternate routes in Stafford County. We need the mine road extension. There may be some positives to this project. I haven't studied it, but when I heard it would cause the road not to be extended, that concerned me greatly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers like to speak? Okay, there being none, we'll come back to the board and close the public hearing. I have a coach. So does the applicant want to address any of the comments?
Just be sure we're all on the same page on the transportation improvements. The original transportation improvements did not envision this landowner building mine road. Anything was contingent on getting the right of way. And I think staff can verify for you, that has not been forthcoming. Now, if that happened, if the right of way happened, then what they were obligated to do, yes, there was design work, but all they were going to do is to take the, take it from the end of Centerport Parkway to the entrance to the property. That's it. That's what segment A is. Everything else would be built by somewhere else. So it wouldn't go anywhere except to that development. That's it.
Unfortunately, that's the way our road developments go these days, is we take little pieces at a time and build a complete road structure. So, Ms. Mauer.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, is the applicant complete? I don't have any more questions.
I'm sorry.
All right. So what I would, if you see, to see things you want to be, want tweaked, you know, please let us do that. But, you know, the retail community's watching here. And this is a big opportunity for the county. And, you know, I think that someone that's willing to come in and put solid retail for you right at the interstate is something you ought to be rolling out the red carpet, someone you ought to roll out the red carpet for. That's what you want.
Thank you. We'll kind of bring you back to the board, Ms. Mauer.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to defer this item. I think there, well, I'm going to wait for a second. Okay. And there's a number of concerns that I have. First and foremost, I would like to know the value of what we're giving up versus what we're getting. This is critically important. The mine road extension is a strategic asset here in Stafford County. And when this property was purchased, that mine road segment was clear as day. And I understand that although it was contingent on getting the access, getting the access or getting the right of way was at the sole cost of the applicant. And so they needed to make a deal. And so I would like to know what the value of what we're giving up. And in all future proffer amendments, we need to know the value of what we're giving up. I mean, that's got to be clear on any future presentation to the board, what we're losing, what they're changing, and what we're getting in return. This is critically important. Also, secondly, Mr. Chairman, I'm not an attorney, but I think there's some legal things that need to be cleared up in this proffer amendment or this proffer application. We talk and we present a GDP, but there's no specific reference to the GDP that we're talking about. And additionally, we should also outline the zoning and how the zoning is highlighted according to our code. So for those reasons, Mr. Chairman, I move that we defer this application with no time. At this juncture, I don't have, with no time certain.
Just a point. Is there any issue with deferring if that's what the board decides? I mean, are we under any time limit constraints at this point?
We're willing to our third, fourth year, so.
This is a proffer amendment application, I guess?
Yes, it's still governed by year one here, but that's out, that's gone.
Okay, so you're all right with that, so.
Mr. Chairman, according to the report, there is, excuse me, the application was completed on April 29, 2019. The one-year limit for the board would be April 29, 2020.
Okay, all right, good, all right. Mr. Cohen?
Yes, Mr. Zurev, if you could get me, it doesn't have to go to everybody if you don't want, but more information on the land between the two retails and the hotel spot? Because I just, I didn't hear a great deal of information as to what all of that is, the topography and et cetera. And you asked, there's something people have an issue with. I have an issue with where the hotel is. So you asked, I'm answering. So that's why I'll go to deferral. You don't have to tell me now, you can tell me later. It's nine o'clock at night and we still have another public hearing. I can always wait.
Mr. Cavalier?
So I actually was here in 2007, Clark. It was a year later I wasn't here. But, you know, and back then, we were hungry for office space to counteract all the residential that was coming in here. We thought that was a good place for it there, but times have changed significantly since then. And I think that this gentleman coming in with this retail plan right now, I think, is exactly what we need for this particular site off of 95. I mean, we've talked about things like Legoland going in there and that didn't happen. And we've talked about other things. But, you know, if somebody's willing to come in and do this and, you know, the residential component that we have here in Stafford is screaming for more retail. And we're sitting on a lot of empty land, not developing retail. But I think that in this case, this is justified. And it's not only just for Stafford County, but it's for people who pass by, like you said, regionally and up and down the East Coast. But it will add to our tax base through the increased sales tax and property taxes and everything else here. So it's a revenue source. And we're always looking for more revenue sources here to fund more things such as schools and public safety and other operations. And for anybody to just summarily dismiss this, you know, doesn't have the foresight to see what this may do. Thank you.
Ms. Shelton?
I wanted to make a comment because I suspect that once we look at the dollar value for what the proffers were giving up and to what work has to be done or has been done to date for the VDOT connection, I think that we might find they're actually on the other side of that. So I agree with you, Mr. Cavalier. I think this is a good opportunity for Stafford. I love the fact that we would be bringing in additional revenue coming off of I-95 in addition to, we definitely need that economic development inside Stafford County to be able to get to the place that we want to go into the future. And I look forward to seeing what you bring forward. But I definitely, as it is even today, I support this venture.
Thank you, Ms. Bumpke.
Yeah, I commend you for working with VDOT for three years. That's no easy task right there.
I have trouble on five-minute calls.
What?
I have trouble with a five-minute phone call.
But I don't think we're quite ready for prime time. But we definitely need something in that Centerport Parkway area. I do agree with, and I think it could be a balance of things off the interstate and something for our community as well. But I do agree that we might strengthen the proffers a little bit, clean that document up, and maybe we can come up with something for everybody. So I agree with the deferral. And I am interested in the hotel area. If Mike could send that email to the entire board as far as the topography there. And look forward to hopefully working with you.
As, boy, acting speaker, I get the last word. I want you to know that just because we ask a lot of hard questions or, you know, it sounds like we're being negative. We're really not. We just want to work out what's best for Stafford and we'll, you know, we're going to get to the finish line on this thing. I think we're all going to be real happy. I think we're all going to be real happy. I preach all the time, we need to diversify our economy. We need to bring other people's money into Stafford. So, when I said we don't worry about who's on 95, that was not a true statement. I, we do worry about that because that is other people's money coming into Stafford, and we, we benefit from that happening. So, again, I, I think we'll work through some of the issues and we'll bring it back at, hopefully, our next meeting. And I think we won't take three years like, or however long the CTP took to, to deal with it, although Clark will tell you we've been working on it that long. But I would say the three years, you can't count the three years with VDOT against us. That was somebody, that was the other guy, so. All right, so we have a motion to defer to our next meeting in a second. Everyone cast your votes, please. What?
I said no time certain. Next meeting is fine, but I said no time certain. I wanted to make sure that we got all the information back.
Can we not have the information by next meeting?
We should be able to.
Okay, Superman. All right. If we can't, let us know, we'll, we'll adjust, okay? Everyone cast your vote, please, for deferral. All right, the deferral is passed six to zero with one absent. And I'm going to ask them to come back and rescue me.
Who wants one?
Okay, our last item, 27, planning and zoning amend the Stafford County Comprehensive Plan by adopting new document entitled Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Plan.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Brian Gooch with Planning and Zoning. Tonight, I'm presenting the update, excuse me, to our Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Plan. This has been in the works for some time, so we're happy to bring it to public hearing tonight. This project is to provide an update to our 1996 Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Plan to reflect current conditions, public needs, existing and planned projects, safety and related planning efforts. This would be a element of the comprehensive plan. This slide gives a general overview of the plan development process. Back in November of 2017, we developed a work plan for this and identified key stakeholders. We established a staff working group to develop route recommendations, which consisted of planning and zoning staff, public work staff, and parks and recreation staff. And we developed initial route recommendations. In June 2018, we presented these initial recommendations to key stakeholders and made adjustments to the plan based on input received. And August through September 2018, we conducted an online survey and held two public workshops. In March of 2019, staff completed an initial draft of the plan and shared that with county staff first, and then public contacts and other stakeholders for review and comment. And then in May through July this year, we presented the draft plan of the Planning Commission and made final adjustments and held a public hearing. In the next section, I'll cover some of the different factors that were evaluated in the development of this plan. First, we looked at existing conditions. So, you'll see the map here. There's a lot of orange lines. It's the predominant facility type in the county now, which represents sidewalks. These sidewalks are mainly provided within newer neighborhoods and in commercial areas. The provision of sidewalks is now a requirement in any subdivision with lots smaller than two-thirds of an acre. The nature of development has resulted in piecemeal sidewalk networks in many areas. For bike lanes, that's represented with the blue line. Those are limited to just Deacon Road and Cool Spring Road currently. We also have a number of shared use paths, including a segment along Mine Road, which was recently extended. The Courthouse Road Shared Use Path will be open next year, which would extend from the new interchange down to Winding Creek Road. Also have a short segment on Trusslow Road between Plantation and Berea Church, and also on Celebrate Virginia Parkway. And the Belmont Ferry Farm is also a shared use path. We also are fortunate in that we have a number of regional routes that happen to run through the county. The East Coast Greenway here is represented as the green line. This is the current alignment for that route. And the US Bicycle Route One is represented by the small symbols. These are both main to key west routes, and they've often followed the same alignment. However, the, for the ultimate goal of the East Coast Greenway is to have something separated from the roadway, such as a shared use path, whereas US Bike Route One, that, that goal can align with on-road facilities such as bike lanes. We also have the Potomac Heritage Trail, which is an interwoven network of routes which generally follows the Potomac River through Pennsylvania, Maryland, DC, and Virginia, with a focus on providing access to natural and historic points of interest. So, we also looked at current and planned projects. I mentioned Courthouse Road widening. Also, with a new interchange, it's going to incorporate a shared use path through that facility on the north side. You can see that here, represented as the purple line. And that will tie into that shared use path along Courthouse Road and then down into the new commuter lot.
Ms. Mauer has a question.
Yeah, so the shared use path, originally, it was going all the way from Winding Creek all the way down. Is that still the plan?
It is, yes.
Okay. I just didn't know if it got cut somewhere along the way.
In fact, if you drive along.
Really? I've been looking for it. It's, I'm so excited about it.
I mentioned the Mine Road extension earlier.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bunkie, yes, a question.
So, Brian, if I, also, when you go back to the, the Heritage Trail, what was it called, the scenic, the Virginia one on the prior, yeah, the Potomac Heritage? If I remember correctly, wasn't it also going from Belmont past Ferry Farm? And it intends to go out to King George? And wouldn't that include the Potomac Tribe property out by Duff Green?
I believe so. I think the, the Belmont section you're referring to is sort of one of the spurs of the main trail.
Right.
So, this is, what's represented on this map here is really the main route. There are some other associated spur routes, such as the one you mentioned for Belmont Ferry Farm.
Well, at some point, we're going to have to deal with the fact that the Belmont only really goes up to Jet Drive. It's not going to Ferry Farm. And then how do you jump over Ferry Farm to get out to the Potomac out by Duff Green? I mean, that's a, a conversation we have to have at some point in time.
I agree. We also looked at safety concerns. So, this map depicts motorists and bicycle or pedestrian collisions since 2014. The timeframe here is beginning of 2014 to the end of last year. So, since that time, we've seen 67 recorded vehicle pedestrian crashes, six of which were fatal. Those are represented by the small red circles. And 17 recorded vehicle bicycle crashes, one of which was fatal, which is represented by the yellow stars. We note here that most crashes are occurring along the more heavily developed corridors such as Route 10, Route 17, and Route 1. And also note that in many of these areas, there are inadequate crosswalks in other So, I want to quickly cover some of the related planning efforts we looked at. So, most obvious of which is County Comprehensive Plan, which this would be an element of, again. And that plan provides some general guidelines for pedestrian bicycle facilities, nothing too detailed. But the plan also includes the transportation plan, which is shown here, which identifies future roads and road improvement needs. So, staff tried to align the proposed bicycle and pedestrian facility routes with these planned road projects where feasible. We also looked at the 96 Plan, which had some recommendations that were still relevant today that we tried to carry over. And we looked at planning areas. So, one of the big topics lately has been the development of new downtown Stafford, which is supposed to be a pedestrian-oriented, walkable kind of environment, urban center for the county. So, we recognize that the connections into that area are going to drive the success of that. So, we tried to incorporate that and establish some proposed connections between this area and adjacent destinations such as neighborhoods. And we also looked at the Economic Development Strategic Plan. So, we've had a lot of great discussions with economic development through the development of this plan. And we recognize that this plan relates to the Economic Development Strategic Plan and that these proposed facilities can really help encourage tourism and, and help, you know, bring businesses and residents into the county and really support those efforts. We also looked at the Parks Utilization Study, which was developed in 2017. That mainly focuses on, on efforts within the park sites, but also recognizes that non-motorized connections are needed to these park sites. And the Comprehensive Road Evaluation was completed recently by Public Works, so we took a look at that and noted that some of these recommendations can help, can be utilized to prioritize the recommendations of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Plan. And also, the County Strategic Plan speaks to transportation and recreation objectives, which relate to the recommendations of this plan. 2045 FAMPO Long Range Transportation Plan provides recommendations on a regional level, so we took a look at that and make sure our recommendations are meshing with those of other localities. And we see this as, you know, obviously, a more focused effort for Stafford. And it sort of expands on those recommendations already established in the FAMPO Plan. And the Virginia Outdoors Plan, this is state's comprehensive guide for outdoor recreation and conservation, so they speak to a number of trail development initiatives in that plan, including the promotion of the East Coast Greenway. We also looked at VDOT studies, such as the one completed a while back for US 17 Business. The STAR study, as it's referred to, which is strategically targeted affordable roadway solutions. These provide relatively low-cost solutions to solving safety issues, including that for pedestrians and bicyclists in the area. And there's one under development now for the Route 1, Route 1 north of Coal Landing Road, generally up to the interchange. And as I mentioned before, we looked at adjacent jurisdiction, jurisdiction plans and their So, for the stakeholders for this, we identified numerous groups, including adjacent localities, state entities such as VDOT, DRPT, DCR, of course, Stafford County entities such as public schools, parks and rec, economic development, regional planning organizations such as GWRC and FAMPO, regional trail organizations, including East Coast Greenway and Potomac Heritage Trail, the Fredericksburg Area Business Association. We also contacted staff from Marine Corps Base Quantico and Stafford Regional Airport. And we reached out to local running and cycling clubs and trail groups. For the survey I mentioned earlier, we had 538 responses. When we asked about cycling comfort level, the majority of respondents considered themselves interested but concerned, which means that they are interested in cycling more, but have significant concerns about safety on, especially along public roads. So, what this tells us is that the provision of these safe facilities can really have a significant benefit on a large portion of the population. Most cited safety concerns and lack of facilities as factors discouraging walking and biking. And most indicated that they are most likely to use shared use paths and scenic or nature trails, because that does give you some separation from the road, some safety and perception of safety for the facility user. We also had an open response section of the survey, and the general themes from that was that safety was a big concern. Additional facilities were desired along Garrisonville Road, Warrenton Road, and Route 1, as well as some secondary roads such as Onville, Flatford, Eustis, and Leland. There's facilities needed along Brook Road to facilitate access to Crow's Nest, and facilities needed to allow safe travel across I-95. And last but not least, a lot of people mentioned the need for maintaining the facilities that we have currently. On the facility recommendations, so really, the goal of this plan is to connect destinations, to establish connections that serve as a viable alternative to traveling by vehicle. This would include connections to destinations such as parks, schools, libraries, shopping centers, places of employment, transportation hubs, and adjacent jurisdictions. And central to this is providing connections between those destinations and neighborhoods to allow people to complete trips without having to get in a car. For facility recommendations, we have a countywide map, which is shown here. This depicts the more major arterial type proposed routes. You'll see on here that there are red lines. Those represent existing and proposed shared use paths, which would be the facility of choice in these areas. A shared use path is typically around 10 feet in width, and as the name implies, it accommodates both cyclists and pedestrians. You also see a gray dash line, which represents shoulder improvements. And this, the proposed width for those would be six foot, a paved shoulder, which would accommodate more of the rural area cyclists, the more advanced users. And these are generally depicted out in the more rural areas of the county, whereas shared use path would be more focused in the urban areas. And you also see the green line that I pointed out earlier, representing the East Coast Greenway, where proposing an eventual realignment of that route to run through downtown Stafford to take advantage of the crossing at the new interchange, as well as a portion of the shared use path on Courthouse Road. And also, a line with future Mine Road extended down to Trusslow Road, eventually across 17 and tying into the Belmont Ferry Farm Trail. We also provided a series of maps that depicts local recommendations. And there's really one of these for each urban area of the county. This is just one example showing the north end of the county. And these maps depict the recommendations, which I covered earlier, but also get into the neighborhood level of facilities with sidewalk recommendations. So, you can see these dashed orange lines. These represent proposed sidewalk connections, with the solid orange lines representing existing sidewalks. We also identify local points of interest in this, including schools, parks, park-and-ride lots, and other transit destinations. And you also see the yellow lines on here, which represent power easements. So, we, we find that in some locations, these power easements can be conducive for trail development, and then they don't intersect people's individual residential lots. In this case, the one that parallels Courthouse Road, it intersects mainly neighborhood common areas and actually goes through a couple of schools and parks. So, on to implementation. We have several recommendations for that, first of which is to make adjustments to the comprehensive plan per Proposed Resolution R-19135, to incorporate these recommendations into special area plans, to evaluate ordinance requirements for the provision of facilities, to work with developers to construct some of these route sections, to incorporate these facilities with linear infrastructure projects, not necessarily just roads, but maybe looking at the possibility of doing these in conjunction with utility projects. We outline a number of recommendations for the prioritization of projects and recognize that we need to focus on maintenance needs, not only for new facilities, but for existing ones. And we identify funding sources. A lot of these you're aware, aware of, I'm sure. Transportation Alternatives Program, it's frequently used for more smaller-scale improvement projects, including pedestrian bicycle projects. HSEP or Highway Safety Improvement Program. Revenue sharing. Revenue Sharing Program, which is the VDOT reimbursement program, Smart Scale, and maybe the potential for some other opportunities, such as private partnerships and volunteer groups. And lastly, we recognize that it's important to keep community members informed and engaged. It's something we've tried to do throughout the development of this plan, but think it's important to continue to do in the future, to get that continuous feedback from residents on what the desires are, is what we're doing, working, you know, even just educating them on what's out there today, what resources they have, and perhaps educating them on some safety tips. So finally, staff supports the amendments to the Comprehensive Plan pursuant to the resolution. We think this will really help us provide a more cohesive network of bicycle and pedestrian facilities in the future. It establishes the vision for the county. And we note that on July 10, 2019, the Planning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval, and I will take any questions.
Have any questions? I have one. Cost.
Cost is not something that we really got into with this plan. I can give you examples of some other costs. In the FAMPO Plan, there are some general costs outlined for that effort, and I have that here somewhere. So the cost can vary widely from project to project, depending on number of variables, as you know. Do we have the adequate right-of-way? Do we need to acquire land? Do we need to relocate utilities? Or is it in conjunction with a larger improvement project, such as a road project? But for the FAMPO Plan, I estimated that the shared use paths, cost projected in that plan was 1.2 million a mile. For sidewalks, it was 340,000 a mile. And for shoulder improvements, it was 550,000 a mile. So with this plan, we have a total of 179 miles of facilities proposed. And that's a mix, includes 74 miles of shared use paths, 68 miles of shoulder improvements, and 37 miles of sidewalks. And I will note that on some of these, these are really already in the plans to some extent. Most of these roads, especially out in the rural areas of the county, are already planned to have shoulder improvements at, at some time. So this sort of just aligns with those recommendations. And with any new road improvements, such as the, the improvements to Garrisonville Road between Eustis and Shelton Shop, which are supposed to happen hopefully sometime in the near future, those would also include improvements such as sidewalks on both sides of the road.
Okay, yes, Mr. Cohen.
Very quickly, so if somebody was going to come in and give, offer us proffers, under what category would this go under to see where it would go? Would this, you know, for example, if somebody came in and, hey, I want to give some money towards, under what thing, when we're going through that matrix, where'd all this fall? If they wanted to give money for a bike trail, that's not necessarily, yeah, is that under general government, or is that under parks and rec, or is that?
In my mind, in most cases, this would be more of a transportation category, since the majority of these proposed routes are aligned with roadways. They would be in VDOT right-of-way and maintained by VDOT.
VDOT would maintain the trails?
That's the idea, yes. If they're located in VDOT right-of-way and built to VDOT standards, then VDOT can take them for, for maintenance.
If we had to go to VDOT standards, it would double the cost. Any, any other questions? Thank you, sir. It's time we open the public hearing. Once again, when you come up, please state your name and address. You'll have three minutes to address the board on this subject. So anyone on my right, wishing to, yes, ma'am, please come up.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Hofstein, 43 Hollyberry Road, off of Holly Corner. And I thank you for allowing me to speak. Thankfully, on Holly Corner, we don't have issues with bikers. However, I do travel other roads in Stafford, like Newton, which is 603, Bell Plains, which is 604, and then 605, New Hope Church. And on the weekends, there are bikers on those roads hogging the whole lane going down. A lot of this have blind turns, just like Holly Corner, and it's very dangerous to be approaching on those roads, because you don't know if there's going to be anyone coming or going. And I'm very concerned about the safety of bikers in the area. And you are very right, Mr. Chairman, to be concerned about cost, but I think looking into this is a very good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber like to address the board on this subject?
My name is Sarah Sanford. Address is 506 Gaddis Street. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm the Virginia Coordinator for the East Coast Greenway Alliance, and the East Coast Greenway, as was mentioned in the presentation, is the country's longest-connected walking and biking route. It's 3,000 miles, stretching from Key West, Florida, to the top of Maine. And the vision of the East Coast Greenway is a continuous, protected path for cyclists, walkers, runners, skaters, wheelchair users, and others. Tonight, I'm excited to speak on behalf of the East Coast Greenway in my hometown of Stafford, where I grew up, went to school, and spent the first 18 years of my life. The current East Coast Greenway route runs through Stafford along several different roads, including Deacon Road, Leland Road, Brook Road, and even Courthouse Road, not that far from where we are right now. However, as you probably noticed from the amount of times I just said the word "road", the current route through Stafford is almost completely on-road, and that's a safety issue as we just talked about. And as I mentioned before, the vision for the East Coast Greenway is protected off-road paths with the appropriate infrastructure for bicyclists, pedestrians, and other non-motorized users. In the draft plan, the East Coast Greenway is mentioned several times, and the realigned envisioned route is included in the proposed arterial route maps. I was really happy to see that, and I'm just here to reiterate the need for protected off-road infrastructure, a vision that fits well with the goals and objectives outlined in the draft plan. Growing up in Stafford, I lived a relatively short distance from all the schools I attended, Grafton Elementary, Drew Middle School, and Stafford High School. But I never once walked or biked to school because it simply wasn't safe. Really, the only place I biked was to my neighborhood pool, and that was only because I was lucky enough to live in a quiet suburban neighborhood with very few cars. I would love to see bike and pedestrian facilities in Stafford County that allow all types of users to be safe and to get where they need to go. Not just the fearless cyclists, but kids going to school, adults commuting to work, and people of all ages who like to bike, walk, run, and move just for recreation. The benefits of an East Coast Greenway route in Stafford would be immense. The Greenway is good for our health, giving everyone a safe, accessible place to exercise and get outdoors. It's good for the environment, providing a clean transportation option. And finally, it's good for business and encourages economic development, and bicycle tourism especially brings visitors who tend to spend a significant amount of money in the food and beverage industry and the tourism industry. Overall, the Greenway really gives back to the community in terms of public health, the environment, and the local economy. So on behalf of the East Coast Greenway Alliance, I thank you for your support of bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, and look forward to working with Stafford County to complete a safe and protected off-road East Coast Greenway route. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber like to address this?
It's me again, Elaine Callender, 622 Lancaster Street. Congratulations for completing this plan. It's been a lot of work and a long time coming, so I hope there should be no problem passing this one. And I hope that next on your list is expansion of bus routes in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber like to address the board on this? Seeing none, I bring it back to the board and close the public hearing. Mr. Cohen?
I'll move for approval of R-19-135.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I have any discussion. Mr. Dudenheffer, you have something?
My only concern is, is the managing expectations and the cost associated with this. Not that this isn't important, but when you put it into the, into the hierarchy of all the things we need in Stafford County, the unsafe roads, the, you know, the, the high schoolers initiative to take over control of all the, the vegetation alongside all the secondary roads. I mean, I, you know, I could go down a list of all the things that have to be there. I have concerns that by putting this in, we're going to basically tell people we're, we're going to be moving forward. And I personally don't see, we should have added it to the Bonn referendum if we wanted to, to do something that dramatic in dealing with it, but that's too late. So maybe we have to do that in the future, but that's my concern. We haven't cost estimated it, and it's, we're now going to have it. It's, it's got to compete. It's got to compete with schools. It's got to compete with road projects. It's got to compete all the way down the line and everything we spend money. And I think Mr. Snellings and I just said, it's, you know, it's a hard sell to not improve an unsafe road as opposed to building a new bike, bike lane. So those are my concerns. I mean, I'm going to vote for the plan. I think it's good to have a plan. If you don't have a plan, you won't even, won't even put it in your, you know, your stack of considerations. But I, I really have my doubts, so.
Ms. Mauer?
Well, I agree with you, Mr. Dudenheffer, and I agree with, with the competing priorities and what Ty used to say, a resource-constrained environment. If we don't put it out there and we don't make it a component part of the plan, what will happen is we'll have these road improvements that don't take these things into consideration. And so, you know, we, we need to set some sort of expectations, because this is definitely a way we need to go. I feel for, for the young lady who came up and spoke. I see bicyclists going down Hartwood Road, like, what are you thinking? And, but it's, it's, so, it's a plan, and as we move forward with new developments and stuff like that, we add these component pieces more and more. And, but without the plan, we wouldn't think of it when we're doing these, these road improvements. And so I do appreciate that, Mr. Dudenheffer. And just another thing we need here in Stafford County.
Mr. Cohen?
And I'll just, not to be a little Tommy Sunshine, but I think this is a great thing that, A, when we did the comp plan and I was on the, the Planning Commission, we talked about this. So it's just, to me, following through on something that Mrs. Urff worked on really diligently several years ago. Secondly, now we can go to a developer and say, hey, this is what we need. We need sidewalks. And it's part, not just what we want, it is in the comp plan. And so to me, it, it brings it full circle, that now we have leverage. And I think that's a good thing.
Anyone else? I am not going to support this. I think it's going to set up some false expectations. I don't think there's any way we're going to meet this plan. And I'm afraid our roads are going to be in competition with trails. Because if this comes in as a transportation proffer, we're going to be hard-pressed to say, no, I don't need a trail there, I need another, better road there. So I'm going to vote against this. I use trails. I walk almost, I used to walk every day. I've kind of gotten away from it, as you can tell, but trying to get back into it. But I, I just can't in good conscience support this, because I think people make some false expectations that are just not going to be there. And the cost, you know, we talk about almost $2 million a mile. That's very, very expensive. With that said, cast your votes. Motion passes six to one. Seeing no further business, we are adjourned.